I'd like to open the Village Council and PRG Board Joint Meeting here today, Tuesday, November 30th. I show the time at 9:02. I show we have a quorum with Andy, Councilman Andy Wortman not being here, and Robert participating remotely. So with that, I'll need to...
And we're missing Dan Wilson from the PRG Board.
Is he? I believe he has to open up his own. So he will discuss that. So hold on.
Oh, is that Dan?
Hold on, let's finish this.
Yeah, I just, I just, Dan, I figured out how to unmute myself this time.
Okay.
Let me, let me finish here. So first up, we'll need a motion to consider allowing council members and board members to participate remotely. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we'll do the, well, let's hold off on the agenda and let you guys open up your...
All right. I'd like to open up the Village of Marvin Village Council and PRG Board Joint Meeting here on November 30th at 9:05 a.m. I do determine that we have a quorum with myself, Christina, and Bob here in person, Dan participating remotely, and our council liaison, Kim, attending as well.
All right. With that said, we're gonna need an adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes or additions we want to add or anything to remove, preferably not add?
Aren't they here?
They are, but I itemize them for you to read out.
Oh, okay. All right. So I'd like to add, under Agenda Items, yep, to discuss and consider amending fee schedule to modify professional pass and facility rental fees. And then under Village Council Business, add Discussion of Government and Nonprofit Communication Request. And then number two, Discuss and Consider Adoption of iPad Usage Policy.
Okay. Any objection? Anybody else? Okay, I'll need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Removed.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you pass me that down so when it comes time for me to read those?
You don't have one?
And you just need, someone just needs to...
Oh, wait, there's the blue ones. Got it. Okay, got it.
Do I hear a motion on the table for the PRG Board to adopt the agenda as amended as well?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I'm gonna win the next one.
Who said second?
I said second, 'cause he called first.
Bob's removed it.
Thank you.
All right. Well, welcome all.
We're an efficient machine, Bob.
Yeah. So we do this, what, once a year or twice?
Normally once a year, but this is an exception.
All right, we're exceptional people. So welcome Plan B Board and, I'm sorry, PRG Board, and thank you for taking the time to be with us. Not yet.
No, no, that we're not the planning board.
Oh, I was gonna say, you've got aspirations.
No, why do you not?
I don't know if that's moving up.
No, no, that's moving in now, no.
All right. So the first thing we have on the... First thing we have on the agenda is discuss annual trade lighting and Santa parade. Derek Durst.
Derek.
Erk.
Derek?
Derek.
Derek, tree lighting, Santa parade.
Yes and yes.
We're all in.
All in.
I'm so excited. I liked it on Nextdoor. I gave it a heart on Nextdoor.
I appreciated your heart on Nextdoor.
Yep, my heart is.
Now that you've got a ride.
This keeps it burning a little. Yeah, that's the most easier. Yep.
Oh, thank you.
New town hall or old town hall, Derek?
Wait, oh, can I have a copy?
Current town hall.
Explain the last year.
I know, I was kidding.
Did you tell Santa an hour before it actually happens?
I thought it was Bob.
Should we have someone stationed at the arboretum to go round up Santa?
We got, we got Bob.
He was probably at the bar.
That is so perfect.
He was probably at the bar. Oh, and Bob being Santa?
No, no, I mean that the Santa was, that he had to be rounded up. It'd be possible. What, a movie?
He was three hours late?
Oh, no, not that much.
Two.
All right, sorry, Derek, go ahead.
Everything's coming together really nicely. We'll start here with the parade crew. Joe, are you driving?
Well, we have Option B is where we're at right now. The, I'm a little worried about the, the original ride, 'cause it doesn't have brakes, so we don't want to be running into Santa this way.
Oh, tomato tomorrow.
I'm so over it.
So I do have an alternate.
Santa killed tomorrow.
I will. It'll just be Santa and I. And maybe, do we have any elves? Did we have any? I have an elf suit.
Oh, my.
Suit me up.
There you go.
Austin!
Austin, you may be, you may be in the back. There's no seat for you, but I can pick you up on a thing.
I'll put that on my resume, elf.
So yes, we have a Plan B, and a Plan C would be Mr. Councilman Lyon's car.
You can use mine, and I have a backseat.
Ah, okay. Well, either way, we hope for a nice...
Option D. Pretty day.
So we'll go with that.
It does look good. The weather's out.
So we've got options, which is good. And my apologies that our ride won't be available. So, anyway.
So obviously, the idea is to leave here at 3:00 and wrap up the parade within an hour, hour and a half, and get Santa straight to the barn where the event will start. It'll, the start is, you know, loose, so even, you know, Santa or whenever you guys get there, I mean, it's just kind of, you know, come and enjoy. It's not a band opening at X time. So we'll have the music going, and the ice sculpture will be up, and we've got the dog kissing booth, which was popular.
What is a dog kissing booth?
It's just a frame where you can take a picture with a dog. Cookies and coffee are lined up, and then you can just kind of see the schedule from 4:30 to 5:30 that I've laid out with four performances every 15 minutes with the, you know, time for them to transition. I just need to line up our music equipment and...
Derek, when you say music equipment, are we gonna use our old one, or we had kind of discussed that the last time?
Still determining if we get over there.
Okay. If you want me to come by over there and we can go through, make sure that we can, we have everything we need?
Yep.
So, can I back up a minute? Okay. This makes no sense where we could, because when we go in all the way here to turn around, it's essentially we're in South Carolina. So I'd like to reroute this. This is a big circle that stays in thing, so I'm going to, if you could have somehow let the fire truck driver, 'cause last time we went all the way into South Carolina and had to make a U-turn, where we could have just made a left and come out the, what is that, spyglass?
Yeah.
Spyglass. So we're, you know, it's just a little bit, they should have made a left on Baltis Roll and then a right on spyglass, and then that takes you back to the front of the community, so...
Don't you leave it?
No, it's a fire truck.
It's a fire truck. They knew.
When they, when they went straight, I was like honking at them, but my 57 could not be heard.
That route was pre-approved last year.
I understand, but I'm looking at it right now, and it goes into South Carolina and...
There's no way to turn around once you get down there.
You go straight into the cul-de-sac.
But not like a certain, not like a...
That cul-de-sac is in South Carolina.
There's no cul-de-sac, yeah. In fact, it is a three-point turn.
That's what I'm saying, there's no way.
My point is, just have them make a left of Baltis Roll and then a right on spyglass, and that'll take them back down to Firethorn. And it stays in, in the Marvin community. So it's, it basically goes like this. It'll make a left, and then there's spyglass.
Where is Baltis Roll?
Baltis Roll's right before, if you take out Seminole, Seminole, whatever road this is here.
So a left on spyglass.
No, left on Baltis Roll.
Well, yeah, front.
You're gonna go by the pool.
So you're gonna go all the way to the end of Firethorn, you're gonna make a right on Seminole.
Left.
No.
Oh, yeah, right.
Right on Seminole, and then you're gonna make a left on Shinnecock, okay?
Yep.
And then you're gonna go to Baltis Roll, make a left, and then a right on spyglass.
Spyglass.
And that takes you back down to Firethorn. And that keeps you all within Marvin. And you're only missing a couple houses.
So here's what I'm gonna say. That's, that's really long. And we need, we're on the time schedule.
It's not that difficult. No, it isn't. It's actually quicker if you do it this way. I'm telling you, if you go all the way into South Carolina and have to turn around, it is quicker to just follow the path and come right out. I promise you.
You're right.
Derek, this is it right here.
It really is quick. It is. And it's easier.
But it's, it may be, and I can confirm all of those lefts and rights and stuff.
No, you're right. You're right.
Yeah.
Hold on a second.
I always forget you gotta turn right on Seminole before you can turn left on Shinnecock.
Oh, wait a minute.
A lot of times, they would go right into Firethorn.
The cul-de-sac where it's stopping is actually not the one in South Carolina. It's the one in the Firethorn Club.
The line for South Carolina is over here, so...
So this goes into Firethorn Club Drive?
It just, yeah, at the end of Firethorn.
What I'm saying is the time that it takes to go around is no turning around.
You're right.
Trust me on this. I live on this road.
You're, you're, no, you're right. And then, Derek, I got one question. Are you guys stopping back here at Villa Tall at the end, or are you going to the barn? I didn't understand that, sorry.
I'm thinking we drive Santa straight to the barn to get it.
I agree, I agree with that, too. I just, I didn't, I didn't hear what you said, so I just wanted to check on that.
It starts at...
And I have a couple of updates on the performances, Derek. I'm still waiting here back from the band. Part of it might just be the holiday. I don't know if it's also the band has their big concert just two days before, but...
There's some issues going on there that I can talk to you about separately in another conversation.
Okay. So I'm waiting to hear back from, from Keith, I think is his name. Yeah. I did hear back, there's a, Darian Malone moved on to a new role, so there's a new high school choir person. She's very excited. I've had some back and forth with her. I just owe her kind of how many songs and what times to pin her down to that. I was waiting to kind of hear from the band first, but that, that's where I'm at right now. We have another PRG meeting next week, so my plan is that, you know, we'll hammer all that out with the specific times between now and then. But those are two musical performances that we potentially could have, aside from setting up, you know, holiday music that we'll have playing in the barn there.
Anybody else?
Who's Holly Heffernan?
She's just a local artist who, she's used the barn before to, like, what'd she do? When her CD came out.
Oh, so guitar or something?
Yeah, she's a...
Okay, cool.
Good singer.
Nice.
Do we, who do we need to talk to to get the deputies confirmed? Would those be our deputies, or would those be just Union County?
Union County. We just need to, I just gotta send an email to the off-duty coordinator.
I didn't know if we needed to ask Mason, since he's in there.
Oh, he probably could text him or something real quick.
I mean, he's right there.
Shall I page him?
And just one thing, if I do end up connecting with the band, we prefer them toward the end?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I can move. Holly's flexible, so.
Okay.
Close to the tree lighting.
Yeah.
Yeah, you haven't tried it.
We need to get lots and lots of... See, that's going.
I'm working on it. I'm trying to have that done by Thursday.
Okay.
At the latest, I can get that, get that...
You know, all the good headlines, so people are like, "Oh, wait, what's happening?"
And, and have we connected yet with, to plug in to the email announcements at the elementary schools?
The what?
The Peach Jar.
I don't know anything about Peach Jar.
I don't know how it works either.
Didn't know, I don't know what Peach Jar is.
It's, it's the way that you send out communications through the elementary school now. It used to be that they would just put it in like a flyer, but now you have to go through, it's called Peach Jar. But I don't know how to do it.
But it goes out to all the parents.
Cool. I will look into that.
And it'd be Rayview, Marvin, and Sandy Ridge.
Peach Jar. You said Rayview.
Marvin.
You can probably call, I mean...
Sandy Ridge.
I would just call one of the elementary schools and just ask them how to do it. And then you should be able to just send it out, like, but they may, no, I mean, they should have...
Because we used to run flyers and give them flyers, and they give them to the first of the room, the oldest of the room, but they, yeah, they don't do that.
I'll look into it. I'll have, I should have an initial flyer, once I have the rest of details from Derek, ready to go by Thursday. Peach Jar stuff, I'll, I can look into it. If it, if it's complicated, it'll probably be Monday before I can probably get to it.
I doubt it is, but I have a feeling it's probably very, like, login.
But it'll be very useful for all of our announcements, like Marvin Day announcements, everything. It's a great way to talk to those kids.
Pick it up. Yep. Peach Jar.
Everything.
Oddly named.
All right. Anything else with that, Derek? Do you need our help with anything at the moment?
No, just be present.
Presence is your presence.
So at the...
How are we set for volunteers for parking or anything? How are we gonna organize any volunteers?
Um, that's, I mean, the parking, the park will be on the staff.
Okay.
So when it comes to hitting the light button and stuff, I think when you're with kids doing it and stuff, which was kind of fun, they hit the button and stuff, which I'm totally fine with.
You wanna give it up? It's like, it's like your only thing you get to do. You can't vote, so you sure you can give it up?
I'm getting past the...
I mean, this is your only job.
It's all jokes. It's all jokes now.
I'm also driving Santa.
That's true.
Hey, don't forget that elf costume. I'm gonna be disappointed.
I, I'm gonna deliver it this afternoon.
I think he should have to wear it the whole month.
No, I didn't agree with that.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Or maybe I can wear it. I don't think I fit into it.
That'd be good, yeah.
No, I just, the processes in the past, it's, it's always kind of not anything organized. Like, Grandpa Mike say a few words and stuff, and we can do a countdown with the kids.
Can you? Just a few? Are you sure?
We could have a buzzer.
And I'm trying to get out of this.
You put up this all the time?
All the time.
You need to back up. Those darts, the darts are gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna wanna get kicked or whatever. This is good.
There's some distance.
Austin set me up a little bit.
It feels good. It feels good to be in this barn. It feels like I can not have to say it so much under my breath now.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead. Sorry, jokes. It's all jokes. Sorry.
But anyways, okay, we'll do something. We'll figure it out. I'll improvise and stuff, so when it comes to lighting time, so. But the kids did it one day. I thought it was fun. They did a countdown.
I love that. I think that's a good, I do, too. I love that. That's cute.
But I have nothing else. I heard we were picking up a tree from the guys over here. We got that?
Got a tree.
Yeah, there's not many left. We already picked, they had one set aside, it's already told. Yeah, okay. We haven't picked it up yet, though, Derek.
No, I'm gonna go by the night.
Okay.
They have weird hours.
Those are, that's for my friend's Christmas tree farm in North Carolina.
Is it too late to ask for people to bring an ornament to hang on? Something fun, other than just lights?
I have a COVID ornament. That'd be a lot of fun.
Masks?
Is it a mask? No, it's got all the, all the 2020 problems.
You know, I mean, it's just something, that's what...
What are, I mean, do you mean like that day, or do you put between like now and...
Put out, put out, I mean, put out, between now and just hanging ornament on there or bring it that day. I don't wanna throw wrench in everything, but it's just, Christmas trees look nice with ornaments on them.
I agree.
Right?
I can put that in the communication.
I think that'd be fun. Like, if you could put that out. If you have a, if you got a couple extra, whatever. I mean, I have a...
Oh, I have plenty of ornaments.
Or make one, or something. But they could do it now. Who was the...
Yeah, between now and...
I think that's cool.
Well, not this year, but maybe, you know, I'd like us to consider doing something like an angel tree.
I would, too.
Where our community, we have, so it's a cause-related activity for people to come out and support people that are unfortunately not in a position to enjoy what we enjoy.
Yeah.
And adopt the family. You adopt the family for the tree, and I think that would be great for our community.
Yeah, I agree. We do that at our church, and that's something where you just take a tag and be responsible for whatever's on that list and stuff. That's a great idea.
We do that.
But for this year, so that's a little too late for...
Yeah, let's do that next year. I love that idea.
Yeah, so make sure we make a note of that for next year. But, but this year, I just thought, just to make it, dress it up a little bit. I guarantee you, everybody has ornaments that they're no longer using. I think, I teased my wife, she has some from when she was in her college days, and I was like, it's, it's just, they're comical, because they were little wooden, that's all she could afford back then. So, but great idea on that, so. Okay, and if you can put that out on, on the website, that'll be kind of a fun thing.
Just as soon as the tree's up, then send it out.
Yeah, they gotta get the lights on first.
Hanging ornament, yeah. I'll put it, I can, I'll put it in the initial communications once the tree is up.
Yeah, but we need to know, "Tree's up. Come bring your ornament. Next time we go to the park."
Yep. Okay.
Is the barn always open, like during the day? So people can get it, like, if they roll up on a Thursday afternoon, they can...
You should go over there more.
I'm busy, Joe. I got a lot going on.
Jokes, just jokes.
It's all jokes.
All right. Are we ready to move on?
Derek, you good?
Discussion of 2022 Marvin Day Celebration.
Derek?
I'll pass this one on. We'll let you argue over the logo for two hours.
We're not gonna argue over the logo.
Jamie's passing it out.
Just like split it in half or do it with...
Okay.
'Cause we just keep the logo.
That's true.
I can't get rid of it.
No, I'm good.
I kinda need another one.
At least one of that gone, not one.
We'll have some lessons after.
Victoria.
No worries.
Next person goes there. Why don't you just go around the table and let each person...
This looks good, Derek.
Give any updates or, or thank Jamie Bays for that.
Thank you, Jamie Bays.
Thank you, Jamie.
She made it pretty.
Is this yours? Did you do this? Do I spell my last name right?
Me?
Yeah.
Let's start with Christina and the logos.
I didn't.
Get the, get the tough ones in first.
Now, I have plenty of color coding on this. It looks like we have. Let's spell my last name right. Derek, B-E-R-G.
Give me one.
B-E-R-G?
B-E-R-G.
It's gonna be a busy day.
Do you like KB?
Could you be KBV?
So we've had lots of iterations of logos. The last week that PRG had, we narrowed it down to four, because it was a bit overwhelming even for us. I, we had a couple little changes we wanted to make to those. We made those changes, and I also asked the designer to show us a black and white version. Think of it as a two-color version, just in case. And the first and third one, those are not two-color versions. Those are multiple color versions, even when they're black and white, because look at all the shades gray. So, because what he said was, those are really detailed. He would be, if that, if you pick the first one, let's say, then he'll do a two-color version for you, but it will be a little different looking than that. It'll be more like the owl is. The owl is really simple to be able to do, a two-color version. The reason I asked him to do that is because inevitably, things turn to two colors, because you find out that if you're gonna do whatever it is you're gonna put this logo on in full color, it's gonna be, it gets expensive at some point. Usually when you're embroidering things and stuff like, or putting it on t-shirts. But we may never need this side. I just wanted you to have that just in case. And if for no other reason, once it gets on pieces of paper like this, and you start photocopying it, it's gonna be black and white. And you just don't want like this black blur, you know, that is your logo.
Yeah, so, so when you envision these to, picture them just kind of more simplified, like these two, you know?
Line drawings.
As line drawings.
And again, he'll do that if those are, if that's the one you pick. So, anyway, I leave you to them to discuss that.
Bob, you have these?
Oh, that's right, he does have them. He should even...
I can't, I actually say, save this to drive, so I can pull this up on the screen and share it.
Oh, you can? Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I sent him a PDF.
Dan, has Dan seen it?
Uh-uh.
I'm pulling it up.
I mean, he's seen all the ones, but he hasn't seen, like, we did a couple little tweaks. And obviously, like, for instance, if, and the owl's back to being, I'm sorry, the owl's back to being brown. It was supposed to be more colorful than that. So if you wanted the owl to be blue, we can change things like that, but the basic layout of it is what it is. If the, any of the colors can be changed or, you know...
And one thing to add, where do we end up with the Bluebird? The Bluebird kind of came in because that's actually more tied to North Carolina, tied to this area, tied to, you know...
Isn't the Cardinal the staper?
Oh, okay, that came from them, yeah.
The Cardinal's the staper, but there's a Bluebird significance.
The local, yeah.
Like, they're knocking on my window right now, actually. The, well, so is the owl. So, I mean, it doesn't look like a barred owl, but, there you go, who, exactly. And that was kind of our original, I think, mine and Bob's original choice. Now, he is kind of reddish, and he just brings it off weird. That was kind of our original choice, 'cause he's awfully cute, and we could see that you could do a lot with kids with that. And Bob's talked to a lot of artists about wood cuts and wood burns, whatever they were, and the little kids could paint them, or big kids could paint them and all that at the festival. So it's a, it's just a more obvious, simple logo. But, you know...
And we thought Austin had fit well on an owl costume.
Yeah. He can eat between now and May and still fit in an owl costume, 'cause it's a rounder than the elf. So just think...
Okay, so what does everybody like? I still love the owl, 'cause I think he's the cutest. But I would, I like this bird.
I will say, in black and white, the owl is the sharpest.
Well, yeah, 'cause it's the simplest.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I like that bird.
And again, we're doing black and white where?
You just, I just wanted you to know. If you need it.
It's not either or, it's...
Yeah, so if you pick this logo...
You got a lot of choices, basically.
No, we'll have, well, not the color one.
Right.
This just, this just happens to be what it would look like in black and white.
'Cause it inevitably happens. So...
If I were, if I were gonna pick, like, my first choice is the owl, 'cause I do think he is the absolute cutest, and we have owls all over the place. But if we go, if we don't really wanna do the owl, 'cause people are gonna be like, "Why are we doing an owl?", then I like the Bluebird circle one.
I will say this about the first and the third one. They're more complicated looking, right? So when you start squeezing them down tiny, I should have done the little tiny ones, too, you're gonna lose some, well, you're gonna lose a lot of detail. And it's gonna be like, "I think that's a bird on a limb, but not really sure." So that, that's your only problem with the more complicated ones. So it just depends on how you're gonna use it. So if you, if you had a jacket like Jamie's got on, and you wanted embroidery that on the jacket, it's gonna be that big, you know? It's, it's gonna be a lot smaller than it is even on that. You just lose some detail on them. But I'm not sure I wanna wear a jacket with that. I like it. I don't know, even the simple drawing.
Bob, you have a particular choice?
Yeah, I gotta tell you, I was, I was stuck on the Bluebird. But I'm looking at everything in terms of, you know, the embroidery, or what is it, you know, wherever it would be printed, whatever it'd be embroidered, whatever it'd be on a shirt, you know, with a screen, print. I gotta tell you, Marvin Day with the Bluebird jumped out at me, but the thing that didn't jump out is Marvin Day. When you look at the owl, it looks cute, even though I, you know, like I said, it just looks cute, but it also says right in Uh, even though I, you know, like I said, it, it just looks cute, but it also says right in your face Marvin Day. Now ironically, looking at the town hall, um, it kinda like is really commemorative, almost like you're looking at the White House. And, and, and like you're looking at something that's bold. So I'm kind of looking between the owl and the town hall, but that may be too complicated to, okay? So my vote would be the owl.
Your vote would be what?
It just jumps out about Marvin Day.
He likes the owl.
Yeah, I like the owl, but I'm saying that the logo of the town hall.
What do you like?
Really looks cool.
It does, I agree.
First, first, first.
Boring. That looks regal. Boring. Boring. It's a building.
At least there's no horse.
I'm old and I could be your father.
You know what it looks like? Stationery lettering.
It does.
Dan, if we, how about we stay remote?
Yeah.
What, what are your thoughts, Dan?
I, I like the, I mean, so when we looked at it before, we kind of went through them and narrowed down. There were versions of each one. And in the end, I liked all the versions that we went with, cause like here's the different ones. So I'm not real helpful on that. I did like the Bluebird, I think, a lot, but all of them, the versions we ended up with of each one were all great.
Boo, Dan, you gotta pick one. What's your favorite? Which Bluebird? Which one?
The color one.
There's two colored ones.
These both are Bluebirds.
Which one, Dan? The bottom one or the top one?
Third one.
Ooh, hold on, I'm gonna have to go back to my email and figure out which one. I thought we were down to one.
Okay.
While you're looking, Jamie.
In a perfect world, I love a Bluebird. But if you sent, if you sent this to me.
You can't see Marvin Day.
I don't know if it's a Cardinal or a Bluebird or what. I don't know what it is. And that's all.
That's why I did that.
But if you ask me, I mean, I love that one.
Well, he was trying to go with your logo.
And I love the concept of the Bluebird, all, because we discussed that. Nausea, but.
Is the person that you embroider with, is it the same price? Cause your logo right there has how many colors? It's complicated and it's all the same price, right?
What do you mean all the same price?
They don't care how many colors.
That is like six dollars to put on a shirt, right?
Yeah, seven to eight now, but.
I'm thinking more of the size of it too. It's, it gets, once it gets smaller, cause think about, his is round, this has got these little things hanging off of it to, whatever. Just the smaller it gets, the more.
I'll have to call you back.
Part of it is to.
For some specific times.
Is it your birthday?
I would go owl.
Happy birthday! I forgot. I write that down everywhere, every meeting, Kim's birthday.
I know what that is. In a black and white. And if anything goes out in a black, if anything goes out in a black and white and it ends up being this, I don't know that, I don't know that I know what it is. I'm, I love the Bluebird for all the right reasons of, because we discussed it, the Bluebird boxes and, you know, doing all that. I love the Bluebird and I like both of them. I can see this, the bottom one, on a shirt or on something that really looks, still looks really sharp.
Yeah.
But if you go, if it drifts to black and white.
Or two-color.
Then it becomes a black bird.
But I don't know what kind of bird it is. Is it a thrash? Is it a Cardinal? Is it a Bluebird? Is, what is it?
Jay Bird.
Why would it switch to black and white? In what circumstances again?
So, e- even if you're just doing flyers, right? The cost of a black and white flyer times thousands versus the cost of a color flyer times thousands. It just, that amplifies itself over time, you know?
It really comes probably also in t-shirts. Because you can do a two-color, the color of the t-shirt plus the color of the print on it. That's really a, a one-color thing. That's cheaper. Once you go into color, you're color.
Then if that's the case, opinion of one, and again, I don't get a vote, as you remind me, then this one is the one that makes total sense. Cause you know that's an owl, you know that's an owl. You don't know that's a Bluebird, you know that's a Bluebird. So these, you know what you get and it says Marvin Day, I, I, I mean, that's just, what?
Go for the owl. Say it. Say it, Derek.
Well, I don't have a vote, so I'm not gonna say it. Just have an opinion. Anyway.
But I would say that the bottom ones, but if we, I'm appreciating the color discussions and so if we're gonna, if we're gonna do a lot of black and white, that's probably the owl. The most practical.
And we do have owls here, lots and lots and lots of owls. We can build owl boxes.
Where? I mean, who?
Who?
I think there's also a lot you can do with the who of, I mean, we've made a couple of jokes here, it's kind of fun, right? And while Bluebirds are cute and all, they, they're not full fun.
I mean, there's a ton of owls in our neighborhood.
One thing to consider, uh, if you do the Marvin Day logo, you can use the black and white logo for kids to color.
That, exactly, exactly. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was, I think, where he was going with this, yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, I walked out.
If, if that's what we pick, if there's some tweaking that you wanna do there, cause it really, that's what color it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be red, but he could be green, he could be blue, he could be purple, he could be whatever. And one of the things that we talked about was if this, as this thing grows, I assume it will, then if you have different, like if you have vendor areas, those would be the purple bird. And if you have, um, uh, more like, uh, horse events, that's the blue owl, whatever. So you could color code things too. So it gives you a little bit more leeway with that, because it's just an owl. We don't have a particular kind of owl.
And you can have him like doing different things each year. Like you got him and then he can be like, you know, on a swing. I mean, like he, I mean.
As owls do.
Well, no, like, what, no, like, what was, there was a frog when we looked at.
Oh, yeah.
Have that's like doing different things like each year, like.
So Rock Hill, um, their town, um, accessible, yeah, they, they have, it's a frog, I think. And so they let all the local businesses, that would really narrow it down here. Um, all the local businesses get to take the frog and, and they create a, it's not so much they're changing the logo, because the thing has a logo, but they create a poster for that year. And whoever wins, then that's the poster that goes around, but it's gotta have the frog in it. That's the only rule. So that's kind of where that owl started, I think. It's cause we were trying to think of an animal we could use that we could really play with, yeah.
I like the owl.
John, what do you like? The owl?
I'm good with the owl.
Bob, what do you like?
Well, you know what.
Owl.
Yeah, I, yeah. Well, it stays with the horse thing, because owls are typically in barns.
There we go. We have a barn named Marvin.
Do y'all still, do y'all wanna consider doing?
Do you consider changing the, um, town bird from the Bluebird to the owl? Going forward?
Wow, let's just go for it.
Yeah.
Do y'all wanna do the owl on the horse on the?
No.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have two logos, the one we end up with, whatever our new logo is for Marvin, whether it's this Marvin Day thing or, or, and then the owl is, you're two running logos for Marvin Day or specific events, you can do the owl thing.
Well, I was gonna say from a marketing perspective, the reason I've always been the owl, it has, it's a lot easier to promote that as a mascot, take it into the elementary and middle schools, however you wanna do it. And roam, roam Marvin, Marvin is the owl. And just grow that concept.
I'm an owl, I'm an owl.
And I think it'd be a lot of fun. It's a lot easier to do than with a Bluebird.
That would be very wise.
I like this. Jokes, jokes.
So anyway, I think the owl's the way to go.
I'm, I'm feeling a consensus here.
All right, let's move on.
Yay, it's the owl! Does it have a name?
No, it's, it's noted in the minutes. You're good.
Then you guys need to be thinking of a name for it.
He's a little shocked. He was anticipating two hours.
I like that. That's Dwayne's first name, too.
I'm not gonna say, if we have to give him right now, but we need to, he needs to have a, a name. Owen is.
Marvin.
Marvin is his name.
Marv.
Marv.
Marvin.
Not Marv.
Marvin.
Marvin.
Marvin's a name. It was named after the creature.
Yeah.
With his last name.
His last name.
All right, so Christina, will your, will your person, um, like, I don't, I don't hate the reddish, brownish color, but will they give us a couple of other color, color options?
Um.
Now that we know.
Not green, because.
No, not green.
Green owl.
Well, you're not, you haven't seen a purple one or a blue one or any of that stuff. You've probably never seen a red one. Um, yeah, well, like, give me some ideas on colors.
I don't know.
Okay, we'll just throw some stuff out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's easy. I mean, that's like a.
It's that color food. Okay. That color of that. Okay, all right, cool. Thank you. Yay! We have a logical, man, decision. Good job, everybody.
In like fifteen minutes, I am surprised. Do you want me to go ahead and do the other thing that's on my list?
Yeah.
Okay, so nature walks, uh, there's actually another thing that's on my list that's not listed here. So nature walks, easy enough to do. Um, I would probably, uh, try to get some help with that from either other marsh people or, um, the IB program at the school, just people that worked in the park with me. And what we'll do is set up times at, um, at the top of, we'll set a place that's gonna be the top of the trail. And we'll just walk them through and point out, maybe an owl, probably not. Point out plants and stuff, because by May, we'll have some nice things growing in the woods. And I'll just run through first and label a couple of things before we do all that. Uh, so we've got little flags, that stuff. Uh, but May should be a wonderful place in the, the woods. That'll be an easy, that'll be the easiest one we're doing.
So we'll have, uh, most of you will be pointing out native stuff of North Carolina.
Oh, yeah, and probably some invasive stuff, so that they can say, you know, so, uh, you know, educational all the way.
That's actually good, invasive stuff that, you know, you might wanna consider getting rid of.
Yeah, don't buy this.
Yeah, so.
So all that.
Bamboo is, bamboo is one.
But, you know, that, I think we inherited that, but, um, that actually, as long as it's controlled, it, it works in that space. Cause you've got acres and acres, it's when you put it in your garden. The other thing that's not on here, and it moves us into, um, the band, I do have a sound guy who has a stage in the whole nine yards. He's penciled us in for that day. We don't have a band. So, but if you want me to okay him, then I'll.
I would do that.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and.
Are, are we paying for him or he's?
Oh, yes, you're paying for him. So he's not cheap, but, I mean.
I think we'll need to know how much it is before we pencil him in.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, um, probably fifteen hundred bucks.
For, for the, what part, where will, what will he be doing?
He will do, um, he will set up a stage, he will, uh, and take it down. And he will do sound for the, whoever shows up. I mean, you could have, he'll, that's pretty much a day rate.
Like emceeing? Like, like work the sound, like for the.
Yeah, so he makes sure that the.
The band, the base stuff.
A lot of them do not.
I've, I've, the, the guy that I'm talking to, and again, I haven't committed to him at all, but, um.
I think we need to let this do pencil him in for right now, until we figure out the band. Here's the thing, if you've got multiple bands and they all have their sound system, you're adding two hours in between setup. And if they don't take two hours, they're gonna sound like crap, I'll just say, cause I know some of those bands. Yeah, so they need a little bit of time to set up. And so what you want to do is have one sound system and they play off of that. And the bands actually would much prefer that and they might even charge a little less because of it, cause they're not having to haul all that stuff. They wanna just walk up, do their thing and get back out.
That takes a lot of time.
Um, it takes us, we like to take three to four hours, but we can do it in an hour and a half. It's just, it's more strange.
Are you a roadie?
I am not a roadie.
She's a band member.
Singer.
Well, have you?
Janis Joplin there.
We are your plans, senior.
There you go.
So, but we, you know, we, just tell me what you want me to do with him. I can get a prize for sure, but that's.
Do that.
Pretty much what.
And where are you at, Jamie? I'm a band.
Well, I've got, I, I've got a, um, a band that I've talked with and said, can, can you just kind of, or I'm not committing to you, because again, back to the financial piece of it. He's, they're a really good band and they're gonna do, they're gonna sound, he's, he just signed a deal in Nashville. He's a really good band. He'll do great. He'll do a lot of cover stuff. But we need to see where, where we are with money wise, because if we got, if we get all of these sponsors, then we might could look at, not saying he's bad, but you could look at upgrading and finding something a little different.
And our location is secure, for sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
High school?
Yeah, I can, I don't know.
So they will be on the field performing?
But yes, we booked it.
Do we know?
Yeah.
The what?
Yeah.
The band will be on the field and the setup will be on the field.
He's got a, a, a stage, a huge covered stage.
And I can tell you.
For fifteen hundred dollars? That's good.
That's what he, that's what he was gonna charge the festival, Heritage Festival, last year and, um, we got.
That's really good.
Cause he was there all day, so.
Okay.
I'm not, so don't quote me on that.
But you'll, you'll talk to him and kind of nail that down?
Yep, find out. Cause this would not be a whole day thing, but my guess is that's kind of the rate. Yeah, I mean, he's still gonna do the same work.
Yeah, yeah.
So do we have, um, what have we planned for, um, officers at that event? Have we?
Christina's reached out to.
We've even gotten her.
Well, we'll probably need, just from a traffic standpoint and when you have crowds, typically you want somebody on site. I just was curious about. Obviously, there can't be any alcohol, cause it's on a school property. Um, but I just don't, you don't know what you don't know and it's a large event and usually there has to be some amount. There's usually a, a, a formula based on crowd expectations, which would be good to kind of get if you, um, Austin or, or we're planning to get an idea how many people are coming. On our SVP to the concert, would be nice just to, for us to get numbers.
That is gonna be really hard to do, but we can see what.
You could do it a bit brighter.
We may not get anyone to.
Respond to them.
Yeah, we may not get anyone respond to it, but it's, it's there.
Sell tickets. And they wouldn't, you wouldn't really be selling anything, but they have to purchase tickets in order to get in the door.
Yeah, I would say, uh, a donation, more of a donation than.
Well, no, no, I was, I was saying that they should have a, a dollar figure on them, but it's that you have to have a ticket to get in this event. And you have to pick them up at City Hall or what, I mean, wherever you want.
Donations will go towards, pick a.
Fireworks.
So Christine, Christina's already reached out to the Union County Sheriff's Office. They've got us penciled in for that date. They just said, let us know how many people they need as we get closer.
The roundabout will be.
And where we need.
They need to know.
Well, and also we're gonna have different things during that date and that kind of plays into one of the other things. Cause the, the two I had on here was securing the high school, which, you know, I think we've got, we decided to request from eleven AM till twelve AM. So, because there's the potential that there's gonna be multiple things. The other thing that I was working on was the equine, uh, piece. And what I've got a commitment from already is right across the street from the high school at Cedar Hill. At, at a minimum, Andrea Gazinski, uh, has said she would do like a two-hour exhibition at some point during the day. You know, so.
Can I ask you a question? What time did you say the high school you had secured for?
Well, this says, this says, which I think is correct, eleven AM till twelve AM.
I have down on the schedule on the other side, high school car show from ten to two. And then the concert through fireworks till eleven PM. So starting at ten AM is the car show.
Okay.
And that's usually just in the parking lot that doesn't need much from a standpoint of.
Can we just say to confirm with the high school?
Yeah.
Like when we're gonna show up. So do we wanna say ten to, I think definitely twelve AM to make sure that we have enough time to clean up.
I mean, they'll have to set up.
Yeah.
So the band, you're expecting the band to go from what time to what time?
I mean, I put down here, um, six to ten thirty, fireworks starting at ten thirty and then.
And let me ask you this, have we thought about concessions?
Yeah.
We're, we're having food trucks.
You're just gonna move from one place to the next.
So they'll just go all over to the, so you'll have to go outside to get whatever refreshments that you want.
Which doesn't matter, cause you're not paying for it.
Well, the big one's gonna be outside, right?
Yeah, he means outside the gate.
Uh, it's outside the gate and then you walk back in and then there's cleanup of the.
I don't know that we're gonna have a gate per se, right?
There's an automatic gate there.
Yeah, like going into the field, you know, going into the.
You, you, you enter in from.
Are there any other options for food there other than food trucks?
Well, there's the concession, but that, that's run by the booster club and, and stuff, which.
Would they be interested in doing that to make money?
They could make money, the.
Is it that good?
The concession's not gonna be like the food truck.
I think the food trucks drop.
I do too. You'll have people like, you know, the lobster place is kind of, ooh, we should go have lobster, whatever.
Obviously, I'm trying to think through the whole thing and then when it's time to leave, people don't necessarily take their trash with them and there's a big huge cleanup project that follows. I remember I used to be a part of that when stadiums would empty.
Yeah, there's just trash like everywhere.
You gotta walk every bleacher.
I mean, I think we're gonna have to do that regardless.
And then we usually do cleanup, I mean, other events in the morning, then we come back and make sure, in the daylight, and make sure everything's cleaned up.
We had for the Heritage Festival, um, Union County gave us, um, their cardboard, basically cardboard, a little bit smaller than that, uh, garbage cans and we put, no, they gave us a big, full-size garbage cans, but anyway, you could do that. And we had them everywhere.
I use this for parties. They're so nice.
We have very little garbage to pick up after a football event.
I would say, I would say most of the people are gonna throw it away.
But, but if you don't have a garbage can, they won't.
I might put that down, the disposable, like garbage can.
I think we have some at the park. Maybe used them at the park before.
If we have them, then even better, but if Union County will help with that. These were, they actually brought us a bunch of regular garbage cans and then came and picked them up.
Can we, uh, can we tap into, uh?
With active, they'll do it.
Christina, do you think we could, uh, reach out to active and?
That's what she's.
Yeah, she's, she got.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just gonna put it down there.
And then they like plaster their name all over and make it a little bit of goodwill. They're the new guys.
Look at you.
Is there an African?
This is like, this is her.
So one thing about the equine thing though, so Cedar, Cedar Hill is directly across pretty much from the high school there. One of the things when they even do those events on their own, that's a challenge to them, is parking. So depending on what it is during the day, people could be parking at the high school and walking to Cedar Hill, you, you, across the street.
Yeah, that's perfect. Cause they could even park in the bus lot too.
Not a safe area to pass there, but.
Yeah.
You'd have to wait for the red light, but that's, that's a little dangerous right there.
Yeah, but I mean, it's during the day, it's on a Saturday.
Did they confirm they wanna?
I mean, if we have to, we'll have, we'll have an officer stationed there during.
Yeah, well, during, during that event to get people back and forth. But, but if we're doing car show in the morning, would we think about doing the horse thing more in the afternoon, kind of as a draw? Especially if people are parking at the high school?
Yeah, like two to four and then the.
You know, and then they kinda.
Three to five and then have the food trucks at five and then move straight into the concert. That's, that's a good idea.
What, did you talk to them to see like what they would be offering?
Well, it, it, an exhibition, I, I think it's really gonna be just, you know, two hours of them, kind of having their team and stuff that do hunter jumper stuff. They'll talk about the horses, they'll talk about, you know, things like that. That's typically, they kinda narrate through it.
Like kids like pet them and?
I, I don't know about kids petting, but that was the other thing that I was thinking as a separate thing. And probably not at that location, but at some other location during the day, is getting a place that offers pony rides. Cause that's been really big. When we used to do the mayor's events and stuff like that.
We've got room for that, I believe, at the park, don't we?
Yeah, we could set that up and like park it at green space.
We could, and I'm, I'm looking at a couple of places now that, you know, they would trailer in six or eight of their ponies and stuff like that, you know, so.
All right, so do you want?
And, and in the past, we have charged for that a, and made tons of money to either put toward the event or toward, um, you know, sponsorship for Marsh or something else, or, you know.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Um, do you know someone who does the pony rides?
I, I've, I've gotten some names from some of the other horse people, so I'm reaching out to them now to, to see about that part of it. But more importantly, I just wanted to get one of the more kind of formalized things and, and kinda work around that. But the, does that make sense? I, I don't know if it's easier for them. I haven't spoken to them specifically if they'd want it more earlier in the day versus later in the day.
I would ask them what they would prefer. And then we'll fit them in.
Cause we don't wanna con, you know, conflict with the fun run. You know, we wanna try to keep these things staggered out, you know, through the day so that people that might have an interest in multiple things.
I think if you could do it from like three to five, like the, you've got garden tours and nature walk still going on. So if there are people that wanna do the horse thing, they can do the garden tours and nature walk in the morning. And then the raptor center bird release, that's just gonna be dependent on if they have any body to release. So, you know, if somebody really wants to see that, then they, you know, go do the horse thing for an hour, then go to the park and then go back or.
So if they can do the, the horse thing later in the day?
I think that would be better.
Does the raptor center ever have like, um, falconers where they, we've done that at the festival, the Heritage Festival before? And apparently it's a huge draw. I didn't see it. But they, you know, they come back. They send them off and they, and they fly back.
Um, I don't know if they do or not, but I can ask them.
Yeah, and they might know somebody that does. It's just a pretty cool thing.
Yeah.
But for some reason, people dig that. I don't know.
When I look at this, and I'm just, I'm just trying to think out loud, when I look at this, I see stuff for adults. And I see stuff for maybe little tiny kids. I don't see anything for teenagers.
What do teenagers like to do?
There's so many jobs.
Like X-Box.
I don't know, but I'm just trying to.
So I asked the guys that I worked with over the summer, and they had two ideas. One was, one of them was in band, and he said it would be really cool if the band could just, like, perform the school band all the way down the, the road in, in the park. Like he was talking about marching band, all, I mean, he thought that would be cool. And just march around. Okay, so that was his thing. And one of the other guys, and I don't wanna, think I wanna get into this, he wanted to have a cornhole tournament.
I was gonna say golf, disc golf.
Or we, there you go.
We've already got the course up.
Exactly. But some kind of tournament, they were all in that. They, they were.
That's a good idea.
They thought it was a great idea.
Just something for that.
What about a photo booth? Do kids like that?
Just.
Not big ones, but little ones.
They do like photo booths.
Just something for that. I mean, I'm just trying to think for that.
My twins all want pictures.
For that twelve to eighteen year old kid, they have nothing to do here.
Mine like, mine like to run around and spend money and buy treats and walk around with their friends.
Okay, so, so, so can we set that up somewhere?
Sure.
I'm, I'm, no, no, I, I'm just saying, can we set, can we set up? I, I don't know, s- some kind of something where, cause I was just thinking, you know, kids networking and have some stuff out there for the kids just to come to, where they're gonna have fun at this as well.
Well, I think like the cornhole tournament, if we did some cool prizes, that will bring people. The disc golf, if we had cool prizes and do some type of bracket, um.
I would pick one of those, not both of those, and I would do the get top.
The disc golf?
Since we got it and it's new, right?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we discussed a cornhole tournament and we decided against it.
Cause it was too much work.
We do. Okay, so disc golf.
So that, and I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just saying it was decided not to.
But the disc, and that was before disc golf was settled, but now it's there, I saw it.
Well, that we don't have to manage. All you gotta do is just say, alright, kids, go out there, just give your best.
But have some profit.
Score, give your best score, and then we'll announce it at the, at the thing or whatever, and give a private. But, but something for that twelve to eighteen year old kid. And, and I don't know, again, I don't have the answer, but if I look at this, I see adults having a great time.
Well, who has teenagers? What would you, what would you, okay, what do you, what would they do if you went to a, a, a festival or an event? Like what would?
Because there's nothing for them to do.
My girls would like, like, my neighborhood does an event and, like, my girls like to go over to, like, booths where someone's making like squishies and selling stuff. Like they just want a twenty dollar bill and they wanna like go buy like fidget toys and buy like, and get like, not their face painted, but they wanna go to like a selfie booth. They wanna buy ice cream. They wanna like, um.
So the food trucks is gonna be good, cause I agree, they're gonna want, they, they like to spend money.
Teenage girls spend money.
Um, I like, I like the disc golf idea. I think Jason would like that with his friends, like going into the woods and.
This would be probably, this, you know, I don't wanna sound sexist or anything, but this may be more for girls and stuff because I, what I saw is, you know, there's always a reason people are doing bracelets and stuff.
Yeah.
Guys wear them too. This one's for confirmation. But I ran into someone this weekend who did bracelets and they were little metal things that was their theme for the year. One had gratitude, one had.
Where they're like stamped and then they put them with the.
It's just a little metal ring that's hung around them.
Yeah.
And that's part of the bracelet that one is hope or whatever. It was just kind of cool, that was the thing, where they can choose
Yeah.
what they make and stuff, and it kinda makes it a little bit interactive. And boys would do it too, I'm sure, and stuff like that. But it's, it's.
He does.
I, I mean, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's, it's something that's interactive that may be a charge.
Yeah.
A small fee that is a donor, but that, you got, there's a lot of, a little bit of organizing whether, what kind of, you know, bracelet you get.
And, and instead of us trying to kind of force these things, what if we were to, there's a lot of clubs and groups already organized within the high school.
The IB program alone is about forty people in it.
Ask the kids.
What, what if we were to, and, you know, make it known to the high school that we're opening up some parts of that day to those groups if they wanna do a fundraiser? If they wanna do something like that? So that they can, so that they can get the word out about their groups.
And this is, can we do, can we do a car wash? I, I'm just throwing stuff, I'm just throwing ideas out. Where, where, where the kids come together, maybe if some of the, they just pick a location with, have a car wash and, and money's there. It's, or it's a free car wash, but have these teenagers have, have it be exciting for them. Because right now, I don't see a thing on here that if I'm a teenager, I'm going, what, that, it's Marvin Day, I don't, there's nothing for me. But if you had a big car wash, I, just ideas.
Or a dunk tank, that's, that's a fun thing.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna dissuade you from that when we tried to do that with the Heritage Festival and it became a liability issue. It became a, you have to have a water source, then, then everybody was freaking out about COVID and being in the water with everybody else. It, we finally had to get it back. We didn't actually use it.
We did one at the elementary school and the kids loved it. I mean, they were, cause you could dunk your parents.
Or teachers.
Oh wow, or teachers, or.
I'll just, just put that out there, that we ended up not using it for, and it was definitely really warm and fun.
First candidate in the.
I don't wanna throw water on all this.
Who's gonna, you don't, you want?
Excuse me one second.
Sorry.
I don't wanna throw water on all this, but we keep adding and adding and adding.
I'm just saying, but just one thing.
And I, I'm in total agreement with what you wanna do. I mean, we've got disc golf already there. Do something with the cornhole, maybe do what John was talking about. We, but.
It could just be out there, doesn't have.
I just don't wanna overcomplicate our first year.
Sure, totally agree.
And I want it to be a huge success. And the more we layer this, the more moving parts we have, the more difficult it'll be. And that brings up another subject for me is, you know, how are we gonna, how are we gonna market this?
Well, Derek, why don't you explain?
Hold on, just before you do that, I do have a connection with the International Baccalaureate Program at Marvin High School. And those guys have helped in the, the park a lot. Um, and so they are always looking for more projects like that. So my plan was to use them on some of the, with the nature walks to help with all of that. So I think they will be involved in that. And they, anytime they get together, they raise money for something or collect books or cans or something, that's just what they do. So I can, they will be involved one way or the other if they want to be, right? She's gonna get it.
No, I totally agree. I think he's thinking of drawing more spectators, well, than, than volunteers.
Again, just something for the, if, if I'm a fourteen year old teenager, I got nothing.
Yeah, it's really music.
I've got, I've got the band and I've got some fireworks. And then outside of that, and I'm, and I agree with you, we want it to be a success. Is there something simplified that we can put in here where these teenagers go, that's gonna be?
Who has teenage boys? Like what, like a basketball tournament? Like we did that at one of ours and then at the end you won, they did like a bracket and then they pick their teams of, you have, I know we don't wanna make it too complicated, but I get where you wanna make sure that they remember it as a super fun day. It's gonna be a nice Saturday, um, and cool prizes at the end. Like I think like the winning team gets something like, that's not just like, here's a T-shirt. Like it's gotta be something cool that's gonna, they're gonna want to win.
Do the disc golf, it's brand new, market that.
If you bring your card, we made little cards for to keep the score, and if you bring your card in, we'll give you a T-shirt or something.
Yeah, but that's not gonna, I don't think a teenage boy's gonna be like, oh, I'm gonna play this to get a T-shirt.
Well, not play it to get a T-shirt, but I, I mean, Jason would go out there with his friends and play it.
Just put the word extreme on it, they'll play it.
Um, there you go. I, I, I don't, I, we don't have, we don't have a basketball opportunity, we don't have.
That's what I'm trying to think, like what could we do?
We have a disc golf course.
That's simple.
It's at the high school. Yeah, but then we gotta get inside.
Even if it's an exhibition.
That's not the facility we have.
We have funds, I mean.
We are getting my school.
You do a motorcycle expedition, exhibition. People come on motorcycles and do wheelies and jumps and stuff and then they're done. But that gives them something to, to come to.
But see, I like the car show. I think the teenage boys would like.
But it's, it's not, it's not too late, I don't think. And I don't wanna, to your point, add on more things, but it's like, why don't we go to the groups that are already at the school and say, okay, and give them five choices? And see which ones, the top two popular ones or the top popular one. It's who would be likely to attend, and that leads into marketing, is my understanding is, the, the parents get a lot of the information from the kids. So marketing it at the elementary level and also at the high school and the middle school, where we're sending information to them, which is included on the almost weekly blurb that I hear from the high school principal. He's always saying, what's going on that week at the school or who did what or accomplished whatever. It's always in, it's in the announcements, but it's almost like announcements to parents, but it's on a weekly basis. But it's fed through the kids at elementary level, middle school, and then high school. But leave it to the groups to figure out, what, what do you think is gonna be best to get your group interested with other groups?
Okay, so what, so what are our top five options? Because, because it is December, we have the holidays. We're not gonna get any response from anybody.
Obviously, obviously, um, uh, the disc golf, okay?
What else?
You can do cornhole, cause that's, that's easy, the simple setup and you have, you can just line them right up.
Alright, got two.
Um.
What about that?
We could.
The pony rides, if we can get the pony rides, that's going to, that's gonna get another segment of those kids that they just wanna ride a pony. They just, that would be, that'd be a huge step. And then I think one more, like the cornhole or something, but the pony rides I think would be a big.
So, can we have a photographer with the pony rides where the kids get their photos on the?
Yeah, I, I mean.
We just increase the price of the pony rides.
I like your idea of, um, wherever it's set up, and I haven't really thought about the location, but, I mean, someone did this simple thing where they had like balloons and you could just, it was like a dollar and they filled the balloons and made like squishies, like stress balls. And like have a table where they could like pick out their bracelets. Well, it was like.
Kids love balloon tosses where you get your backup and stuff and then they, it's, it's just a process.
This was like a dollar though, that they like made them and like got to take them. Like my kids love standing there and like filling up their balloon and making like a squishy, like a thing, and like the bracelets. But I just don't know where, like mine like to go get twenty dollars and spend money and walk around with their friends. And go to a photo booth. Like I know someone who has a photo booth that run, like you pay for the photos. And they wanna walk and talk with their friends.
What you are describing to some degree, and I don't know who goes back far enough to remember the old mayor's events, right? Where they did have pony rides, they did have exhibitions, they did have literally like you're talking about. And, and the same thing that we've done at the Christmas things, build your own decorations, stuff like that, you know? The thing is, is, you know, that would seem more like a barn thing. I don't know if that would be a stadium thing. And I, I think what we're trying to do is to have all these events that are kind of manageable. We, we don't necessarily need anyone to be too big during the day because we're trying to control parking, all of those things. But we wanna be cross-marketing each of those things and telling those people, oh, wait till you get down there tonight with the music and the food trucks and everything. You know, so it's more like, more of these kind of smaller things building throughout the day. You know, feeding into the, to this larger thing. And i- if we get into too many of these, like setting up craft tables and things like that is very volunteer heavy, you know? So we've, you know, when we talk about, yeah, when we talk about this crew here and a couple other staff, you know, gonna be spread out throughout all this day, you know, kinda keeping an eye on things. And we, we just really gotta be careful of getting into too many things. Now, i- i- if we were to try to do something, um, you know, I, I think you're, the biggest thing that would get, you know, high school age kids out is something around music, you know, which we are doing at night. But, you know, do we do something a little bit earlier where we open it up to some local bands that the kids have? Or something like that, if we've got a soundstage before the, the food trucks and things kickoff at five PM?
Yeah, he'll set that stage up probably that, it'll be ready that.
Maybe something like that, but, you know, having, ha- having a seventeen year old, a nineteen and a twenty-two year old that just came through all this stuff, whatever you dangle in front of them, i- i- unless it comes from them, you know? It's gonna be hard, and that's why I mentioned the clubs maybe, only because the clubs are already a unit that's kind of structured there.
They organize them really.
In all fairness, we don't have to worry about anything until noon because they're all sleeping in anyways. And they, that's their lives and stuff. So it's really in the afternoon which kinda like, we're looking at something, to your point, whether it's, I don't even know if there's a, there could be a high school band that exists right now that we don't even know about that.
That the kids love.
Yeah, that, that, go out and support their friends and stuff like that.
You mean guys that are playing, they're, I promise you, they're, they're not good, but I promise they exist. They may or may not be good. But I mean, you, I mean, you know, you can let them up there, right? You got the, you got everything they need to.
And I'm talking about before the main thing.
That's what I mean.
You know, but just giving them an opportunity.
I think it could be awesome to be.
They may or may not have family, family friendly songs.
Exact, well, that would be part of the rules.
That would be part of the.
Come on, that, that's easy enough to say, you can't drop your F-bombs here, thank you.
Yeah.
To clean up sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah, not to get ahead of Derek, but I would like to give everybody an update on the art tour and the garden tour. Yeah, yeah. Not to get ahead of there, but I would like to give everybody an update on the art tour and the garden tour. And we've got, uh, seven people participating already in the art tour every two weeks. Austin's sending me out of flash, trying to get volunteers. I have two people pending. Uh, one lady's moving in from California, but they can't move because they can't backhaul anything. Everybody's moving out of California, everybody's moving in, so they're not being able to get their furniture delivered. Uh, and then on the garden tour, we only have myself and Lambeth Marshall. And then we're gonna do Eford Park.
I'm, I'll work on you some more. I, I'm sure I'll get one.
Saying moving, what is the issue there?
They're moving from California to Marvin. And the van line is prepared to bring the furniture, but they wanna backhaul furniture. So they wanna have a load to pick up and take back to California.
The, the hauling company?
The van company.
Nobody's moving that way?
Nobody's moving that way. So they've already been delayed, I think she said four or five weeks. But anyway, it's, when, anyway, when the time comes, the art tour may be up to seven or eight and.
Was I supposed to talk to Tom Rizer?
I already have.
You did?
And he's in.
Okay.
So.
I forgot if we said, cause I know Tom.
Yeah, no, Tom's all excited. So, so anyway, we have those. And, uh, some of the people wanna have it at their home, like Lambeth, Tom, those have to be at their house.
Yeah.
And some of the ladies are not comfortable having people come to their house. And they would like to be able to set up in the pavilion at the park.
Yeah.
So, where they would have their display and they would like to be able to sell some of their goods. To your point, you know, it may be something girls like, you know, trinkets or whatever they're painting. And I don't know what the cost is, but I'm sure some of that stuff's not that expensive.
Anything they can spend money on, they like.
Sounds like my wife. So anyway, but, so anyway, it's coming along pretty well, so.
And I, I'm gonna send out, cause I haven't done it yet, but to master gardeners that are in at least two eight one seven three and maybe around that. But pretty close to us. I, I've, I've got all their addresses.
And then on the ice cream truck, I've got that finalized. He's gonna be there from, uh, we got him from ten A M to seven P M.
Cause who doesn't want ice cream at ten A M?
Uh, I tell you, so from ten to seven, we'll have the ice cream and it's six hundred and fifty dollars. The first two hundred servings and it'll be individually wrapped. It'll be everything from another day to an ice cream sandwich to whatever. So, uh, it'll be two hundred free, the first two hundred people will get a free, uh, free ice cream.
Which, what is that? The ice cream?
Truck.
Is that, um?
It's Carolina Ice Cream Truck is the name.
Are they gonna be moving to different events?
We decided at the last meeting not to.
This says either at Village Hall at closing event.
Yeah.
And then it said we were gonna confirm vendor and location and time.
Right. And the last time I, I heard we were putting him at the park, but I think we need to move him up from the park. I don't know, when does the band crank up or?
Probably not until six.
I don't know if I wanna be cleaning up ice cream in the, uh, if, if he stands there. Drink is one thing, you know, but.
Just have him at the park.
Alright, so.
If that's okay. And he's gonna give us one truck, uh, drive. And we decided on one. He, he's got another truck available.
So he's one of those traditional box cars that has all the different kind of.
Yeah, with the glass.
So essentially, it's probably about three dollars, uh, cause the first two hundred are free. It's six hundred and fifty dollars. He averaged.
You nailed it. And then, and after the first two hundred servings, it's three dollars a serving.
Right, okay.
Exactly. It's the way it works.
And I didn't even, I didn't, we didn't even have this. I'm a math guy.
And he covers, and he covers his costs. So anyway, he's, he's booked and I've been to functions where he's been at. And he does really good.
Okay.
So just, so wait, let me ask. So you said that the first two hundred or something are free, but you're still taking money for those, right?
No. He's, he's charging us six hundred and fifty dollars, right?
Why are we not charging everybody for it? That we don't have to pay six hundred and fifty dollars?
Charging everybody for.
Well, I was thinking.
And then you put, get the six fifty back or put it through.
Well, here's an idea. And I would, you know, when you're marketing this, you know, you know, telling people to come out early. The first hundred people.
Free ice cream.
Get free ice cream. And you may only do a hundred, but on the other hundred.
There you go.
We use three dollars. We, we pocket that money.
Yep.
But we can do the first hundred people come out and it's free.
Yep.
Even though we get two hundreds free.
I got you.
So.
I like that better. So maybe fifty.
Yeah.
It gets people.
She must be.
Yes.
It gets people to come out, which to your point and stuff like that. Now, the only thing I, I noticed here is since we're talking about ice cream choices. The food trucks, they're not listed on this, um, schedule and where or when. So do we, do we know that?
I, I think that mainly we discussed being, starting at like five or six P M. I thought I saw it on here.
A breakfast, a breakfast food truck in the morning would be really cool.
We, we talked about that. I, I don't know who's.
Derek. This is Dan.
Dan's, I think.
Yeah, so I, I have some calls in the food trucks and, um, we were looking at three. I guess is the number we had talked about. And we didn't really have it pinned down. I didn't think on exactly when. And so really, at this point, it's just been talking to people to see what availability is. I don't think it's gonna be a problem to get, uh, what we want. But I, we do need some kind of specificity, uh, specificity on time and place. And so I do think we kinda need that, um, guidance and then we can lock them in. I had that list from, uh, the really good event coordinator, Angela Steen, who is in Providence Towns. She gave this awesome list of like every food truck she's ever worked with in the area. And so we have this great, uh, resource to tap into. And then we also had some good suggestions the last meeting from local folks, but.
What he just said?
I think if you could just decide on exactly how many and location, uh, that'd be great to, to really nail things in.
Yeah, Dan, were, were you looking into a coffee truck for the fun run, the morning thing, having that over at Marvin Elementary? I, I thought we discussed.
I didn't, I didn't have that on the list, but we could certainly add that, so no problem.
And do we, do we, say if we go with three, do we wanna do one in the morning that's for the, say for the run? And maybe one in the afternoon that's, or one that's at the car show? Cause I know the car shows, they had like three or four there. They had a great pizza one, um, that we used. They had a variety of different ones. I can find out who that.
How, how early is the car show gonna be?
Ten o'clock to two. And they're, they, they literally just parked themselves right where the cars are and people were walking up. Because it is, you have a lot of people coming into it and while they're there, they're, they're, they're spending a couple hours. They get hungry, get a snack or get the kids.
What we should do is have the coffee, when the fun runs over and things are winding down in elementary school, have the coffee one go over to the car show. And let them do there for an hour or so, cause it's still gonna be in the morning. And then you have like one or two, bless you. Food trucks at the.
Car show.
At the car show. And then you also have a couple at the barn, at the park. And then the two at the park come over to the barn, or come over to the high school. And then you'll have.
So what's going on at the park between ten and two?
Uh, art displays, the Raptor Center, um, garden, nature walks. You basically have stuff at the park from ten until about four.
Uh, eight.
Yeah, I'm not sure. They, she's got garden, that's one of the things I was gonna ask about, garden tours and nature walk. I mean, I'm not gonna keep anybody out of the garden, but I don't particularly wanna be there.
Yeah, I would, I would say the garden tours and nature walk starts at ten.
And, and I think by six, we wanna start moving people to the other event.
By six, I think probably by like five.
Well, that gives them time to go home if they wanna.
I thought we had down here, garden tours, nature walk, three to four.
We have them twice.
Okay, yeah, but the afternoon, and then garden tours, nation walk, walk at three, and then a bird release at four. And then moving over to the high school then.
But we also have garden tours, nature walk at eight o'clock and nine o'clock.
I think the last meeting, I thought you had said that you wanted to do two, like two different times.
Two rounds.
Two rounds.
Yeah, but not at eight o'clock and. Like ten to twelve.
It says ten to twelve on the.
Yeah, but just need to move it down.
It's in the wrong spot.
Alright, I'll move that down.
So are we, so are we good with coffee at the elementary school? Like that month in May?
After, before the run.
Yeah, have them there like.
Just right there.
Like I'm not running, I'm gonna stand there and drink coffee.
Yeah, so have them there like.
I'm gonna run to the coffee.
And eat doughnut, okay.
Let's just, there's not a run, okay?
It's a walk.
We decided that, it's a walk.
Do you think, do people?
So have them there at seven, coffee place. When at like nine or ten, move over to the car show, or at ten, have the coffee people move over to the car show. Then have two actual food food at ten or eleven at the high school. And, and two more at the park. And then the two at the park can go over to the high school at like five.
And these, these, these two trucks, my understanding, they want minimum guarantees.
Yep.
Correct?
Especially for a new event. I mean, they have, and we have no idea what's.
I mean, there's some people that'll just show up with no minimum, but if they, but a lot of them have pretty high minimums.
But so as Dan's calling around, he's, he now has a better idea of times and how many and places. So he can kind of firm that up and find that out. But that's why when we have two hundred free ice creams, we don't give away two hundred free ice creams. We're having to pay six hundred and fifty dollars, like, uh, unless, unless people are getting a ton of sponsorships. So unless people have actually gotten some commitments, like we need to.
I, I would also say, you know, they're taking their day out to do this. It, you're talking about two at the barn, two at the thing for those afternoon things. I, I, I would say more, you might wanna just have one at the barn, one at the, the, the other place. And then have them kinda converge later.
Yeah.
You know?
I don't, I don't think.
Because I don't think during the day, it's gonna be people just kinda hit and miss, come and go, you know?
People would go to the park if there's like two food trucks, if that main, cousin's main lobster and like a taco truck, I'd go over there and get lunch.
Yeah.
And not, and not do anything.
Yeah, I like that. I like that lobster.
And, and, and I don't think we can only have two food trucks at the high school at like dinner time.
No, that's why I'm saying, I think.
We're five, six months into this thing, right? And we, we went through this and we laid it out, okay? And we've got this. We, we can't just keep arguing over every event and what we're gonna add and take away. Like at some point, we just gotta stick with it and roll with it. And like Bob said, like, let's, let's do it right. Just keep it simple and, and do it well. I mean, this is the, the planning time to, to hash it out and. But we're just talking in circles for two hours and like let's, let's get it done. I mean, don't over, you can't overload the park, right? With too much stuff. The, the parking is limited. Um, we've got the school. I like the idea of pushing the car show back and, you know, we go right from the car show. Into the, into the event, but y'all are gonna create chaos for staff if, if you're constantly changing things and adding. And like, let's make the decision and.
I, I mean, I, I think that's what we're trying to do with the food trucks right now. It's trying to figure out how many we want, where we want them. I don't think that that has been decided yet.
No, can we?
So, so coffee truck at the middle school, like coffee and pastries, elementary school, coffee and pastries. I mean, is that not what we're trying to do?
And then coffee and pastry leaves is gone because I don't see coffee and pastries in the afternoon or evening.
So that will just be like from this, like seven till ten A M at the elementary school.
And then baby moves over to the, uh, car show?
Well, are we changing the time of the car show now from ten to two?
No.
Okay, so ten to two, I feel like we would want lunch there. That's what I would go to next. I would wanna eat lunch during the car show. Is that what you would typically do at a car show?
Yeah, I, I didn't see a coffee place there, but I wasn't really looking for a coffee place, cause it was ten o'clock. We were just all still setting up and, and stuff, so.
Is that, I mean, I've never really been to one, but if it's from ten to two, I think I would probably grab something like for lunch. What do you think?
I, I, I would agree. So I'm just, just clarifying that, so the coffee place, coffee truck would only be there. For the morning event at one event.
At the elementary school.
And not at the park or anything. Doesn't have to do with lunch. Okay, so that's one. Then we have, let's say. I know we need at least two thing, because these car shows, I mean, I know my weight when I ordered the pizza. It, and they had two hundred cars there. You got all these people coming in and get a lot of advertising. I waited forty-five minutes.
That's a long time.
For my pizza.
Wow.
That's, I mean, it gets backed up because they, and they only had, and they had a taco truck, they had a pizza truck, and they had another truck there. But that, that, you know, you're picking and choosing. Either way, I think every, all of them were backed up because of the numbers. It, when you look at that much. It is what it is.
Three food trucks?
Order in. No, two to three is what, if, we don't know how big the, the car show is gonna. They'll, they'll be busy and people will go up and either they order and they say, oh, that's too long, I can't be here. And they just don't order. Or they order and there's, but you know, you get your phone number and they text you when your food's ready. You go back to your vehicle or whatever. Or walk around till your food's ready. Um, but, I, I mean, again, at minimum two there, I would say. And it all depends on how many cars we get, because we initially talked about just doing Marvin and this area. Like I, I just met a guy, Waxaw, he's got thirty cars.
Good boy.
That he could, that he has in a building that he could bring just about any vehicle that he wanted and stuff, but it's not. It, so there, there'll be a good group just within here without even reaching out, I think. But it's the bigger you get, we had people from Denver, um, North Carolina coming down for this event. And it, it got big really quick. It went from like a hundred last year to over two hundred this year, so.
Worst case scenario, you can add a food truck, right?
Well, they're pretty booked for summer.
They, they tend to be booked.
But there's gonna be somebody. It might not be your first choice, but if all of a sudden you've got two hundred cars somewhere, we thought we were gonna have a hundred and we had two food trucks. I don't mean like the day before, but we would know that a month or two before.
I think with wedding season and, I'm, I'm on a food truck page and it's really tough to book food trucks. They, they're helping out.
Kid, can I just go south there, just, um, and I don't know where, but just, again, I'm thinking of kids. The adults are gonna have a lot of fun. I think this is gonna be a lot of fun for the adults. Is there, is there a wagon? I don't know if you don't call it a food truck. Is there a wagon that you can have caramel corn? I mean, uh, caramel apples.
Like horrible food.
Cotton candy, popcorn. You know that thing that you see at the fair that's got all the junk crap food in? That the line keeps going because I just want cotton candy? I don't know where it goes. I don't know if it goes.
Maybe I'll start a business. I'll do it.
Oh, there are plenty of those kinda guys.
But if we can get that, if we can get that some, you'd be amazed it attracts.
We can look for one.
Fun to catch.
Which location? If you just put, like, we could start deciding like where and what times, then we can start finding the vendors.
Yeah, I, I think really the focus i- is gonna be at the high school. Whether it's the ten to two with the car show, we expect probably more. And then probably starting at like from five till eight or five till nine.
Or they're still selling stuff.
And, and I think we want at least two.
Junk food.
Yeah, two food trucks and then see what else we might be able to get with like a novelty cart. That does funnel cakes.
I mean, mine, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. Like one of those like funnel cakes and, um.
The popcorn guys, kettle corn, cause it smells so good. Yeah, those, those are, there are plenty of those guys.
Junk food wagons.
You think two are enough during a concert?
I'm just thinking of the kids. I don't want this to be an adult thing.
Well, you're gonna have two, you're, you're gonna have two food trucks, but you're also gonna have two of these other things. Yeah.
And I'm gonna, gonna throw a monkey wrench in here. We've got the car show from two, ten to two and then nothing at that location for four hours.
Well, that's where I was talking about the equestrian thing.
Oh, no, I don't mean there's nothing going on. I'm thinking from the food truck vendor, I, certainly the same guys that are gonna be at the car show are not gonna sit there.
No.
On their hands for four hours and, okay.
I think lunch will be different than dinner.
I'd eat lobster for both, but you know.
Okay, so again, how many food trucks and where do we want them? Like, we keep talking about it. It's great, but where do we want them? And how many do we want? And let's tell Dan.
I'm gonna start with one coffee truck at the ru- walk run, two, minimum two at the, um, car show. And then now we're at the afternoon. Does it go to, do we have any at the park?
You need, you need something at the park for lunch. You have, you have shit at the park all day.
I would say, I would say one at the park. I think the park is gonna be kinda more.
Yeah, it's gonna be more transit. The, the car show is deliberate and it's like.
It's something that's like kids would eat maybe at the park because we're gonna have the disc golf, maybe pizza or.
Dan, Dan, you can figure out, so we're gonna have the coffee truck at the elementary school in the morning. And then, yeah, whatever, coffee and whatever. And then.
There's an ice cream truck. Go ahead.
And then two at the car show and then one at the park. And then the one at the park will come to the high school at like five.
If they want to, right?
No, I, I think we need three at the high school.
But I mean, will they just book all day? I don't know. That's what Dan's gonna find out. So Dan, we're giving Dan his, his instructions. And then Dan can bring it back to us at, you know, whatever our next meeting, not next week, but one in January.
I've certainly seen, uh, food trucks sitting at like Lenny Boy Brewery and nobody's going over there. And they sit there all day long. So I know they do it. I'm sure they're not happy about it, but.
I, I think, I think you're gonna have people.
You pay them a minimum. That's how you get them all day.
So Dan, are you good with that? How many did you say?
Yeah, no, I think you outlined it as long as I know how many and what time and where.
There you go.
I think it's, uh, not hard to coordinate it.
Okay, so you're good. You know when, where and how many?
Yeah, I think I got it down. I'll email it out to make sure I, I heard it right.
Perfect. Perfect.
But then, um, I think I'm good to go.
Okay.
And Dan, I, I will, I, I know that the, the place I went to, the, the, whatever pizza truck it was, if I can find out who they were through the last show I was at. I'm, I'd give you their name too, cuz I'd highly recommend that. People, that's, there was a reason why there was a forty-five minute wait, cuz the pizza was good.
Now, that's, that's great, we, we did get, uh, we had a couple good suggestions of local folks and one thing I wasn't able to find, a ton of, from this list that Anta, uh, gave us. Was ones that were actually local, so any suggestions, just send them along and we'll get them plugged into the, somewhere on the schedule of, uh, if they're.
I don't like it at this schedule, we don't need an ice cream truck.
Perfect, so we're slurring it.
To seven.
Okay, so let's just, let's just run through the back of this, to hit this stuff that we haven't hit yet. Derek, you've got Walkathon, you're good there?
Yes.
Health Fair, you're good there?
Yes.
Jamie, you're good with the blood drive?
Uh, yep.
Okay. Derek, we've got disc golf, so are we just gonna have like a, like it set up and have frisbees for, cuz kids are.
An honor system?
People aren't gonna have enough like frisbees.
Yeah.
Like, so I.
That, that's, that's one of the concerns, that, that people don't have their frisbee kits with them, so.
So we get frisbees made up with logo on it.
I was just gonna say, there, there's your bro.
And, and there's like, here, go play, and there's your, there's a giveaway.
Okay.
So if you sign up to go.
So we could, we provide one frisbee?
Yeah.
Per person who, with the logo on it, and some people, if you see, they have all different.
I know, but.
And they can bring that and use that?
Correct, like for the kids, if we want something for the teenagers to go and play and do, we do a frisbee. So put frisbee down there, get the logo on it and give the one away.
And then also, um, the way you, if you're gonna give out a significant prize or something different, the honor system is. You don't keep your score, your person you're playing with keep your score and they all turn in the scorecard, so we'd have to create a scorecard.
I'm, I'm sure there are scorecards that we can buy.
I'm sure there are.
We need some anyway, right?
Yeah, but with, with all of these little things is like, you know, we're, we're, Jamie and I are, uh, given the task of getting that sponsor and stuff. Like I'm trying to figure out, how do we incorporate those, that sponsor to if, you know.
On a frisbee.
So whoever or seventy-five hundred or gold, platinum, whatever sponsor is, then they get it on the frisbee.
Yeah, but, but I'm saying, what a, what else are we thinking? We get that, um, we create a banner for them?
No, it, it has a whole thing, we have a whole thing of what you get when you're platinum, what you get when you're gold.
I just wanna make sure we're.
If that's, we get that donation early enough, we're not gonna have time to have frisbees printed.
I agree.
Well, okay, well, we're, we're getting there.
We know we wanna now on it.
We're getting there, okay, Christina.
We need to.
Nature walks, you're good.
Got it.
Christina, t-shirts and logo, we're good for the logo, t-shirts, we just need sponsors and we, how much lead time do you need?
I think we normally have, uh, less, it's three weeks probably, four weeks.
Okay, so we should be fine for the sponsor, but.
But we will have to make it, yeah.
Okay, Bob, garden and art tours, we talked about art, garden, you're good there?
Yep.
Okay, ice cream, John, high school.
Good.
Equine, okay, open house Firethorn, Firethorn is gonna set up stuff and we just need to advertise that Firethorn is open. And we're good there. Raptor Center, we're good. Jamie, you've got band, we're working on that.
Yep.
Fireworks.
Working on that.
Joe Car Show. And Bob Car Show. Christina Logical Su- Logical, logistical support, okay, meet and greet, okay, so now we're to sponsorships. So, I've been giving out the letters along with the letters and then the different levels. I've got one person that I know is gonna do something, I'm trying to talk them into more. Um, and I've given it to somebody else that is gonna do something, I just don't know how much. I have been told that there are a couple of people that, you know, and Joe knows that are like, I'm not gonna do anything until somebody like starts putting pressure on. I'll tell you who that is later. Um, but we, I mean, we all, we should all have the letter that kind of explains what Marvin Day is and then all have the sponsorship levels that they can sign up for.
I have additional forms if anyone needs them.
So we need to be taking those and we need to be talking to people, like, we are going to have to go out and just be like, hey, you own a business, you know? But the very least gives five hundred dollars, like get, like help us make this, I think the budget.
So do you have, do you have, um, an idea, cuz Jamie and I talked about us going and meeting with the people, say Publix?
Yeah.
Um, so Publix would be one, um, Firethorn.
Go get those things, we, you and I gave Firethorn theirs, we haven't heard Daily Spot from them, so I definitely think we need to hit them back up.
Right.
Especially if they want like to be.
Well, I'm, I'm saying official calls where we actually come in and sit down with them and say, look.
We did that.
I, I know that, but Jamie and I, we haven't gone to Publix yet, anybody else you can think of, big, big, right off the hand is.
Movement mortgage.
Yeah, that's, I was just looking across the street.
Give, eh, give everybody one so they can see it.
You know, there's really nothing.
Does anybody not have forms?
I think I would look for who lives in Marvin and what businesses they own.
I know, I know, real estate guy who's dying to get his work name out here.
Whatever his name is.
Yeah.
Who is it?
That's true.
I've already.
Thank you.
Fifty-seven.
John, are you gonna have forms?
Yeah, I have.
He's like, I'm not gonna say.
And I got a couple more if you don't want.
Not the same thing, right?
Yeah, Derek.
He's, he's like, he's, he tells Tom that he's trying to.
Well, it's, um.
As you get sponsorship inquiries, information, uh, if you afford those to that Jamie. Uh, we've decided that instead of going outside for an event planner, we're gonna do it in-house. We have a bunch of people that are already invested in it and it just makes more sense to keep, keep the money here. So me, Jamie and Gretchen are going to, uh, run it with Christina's oversight.
Your oversight, you mean?
My oversight, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue to handle the facilities, um, kinda the overall logistics with the timing and everything, making sure the facilities are reserved. Um, Jamie's gonna handle the sponsorships and the financial side of things and help me with sort of the food truck scheduling. And then Gretchen's gonna take on the communications, you know, bugging Austin, making sure he's sending out stuff. Um, and kinda ordering anything that needs logos and that side of things, so, um, that's how we're gonna divide and conquer. Yes, sir?
Now, comment question, um, you know, I go back to one is to be extremely successful so that we have year two and year three. And for it to be successful, at least in my opinion, we have to get beyond the boundary of Marvin in terms of promotions. We gotta, we gotta promote in a general area for, because we got, what, I think it's seven, we got eighteen hundred homes and eight thousand people living in Marvin. And base, base.
It's about sixty, between sixty-three and sixty-eight, right?
Yeah, so, you know my point, and the, and the thing that is, you know, history has shown, at least in my opinion. That we don't do a particularly good job of marketing our activities. You know, if I look at, you know, National Night Out, or if I look at, you know, a lot of different things, we don't get the turnout from the community that we need to get. And I think a good investment for us in this event is a promote, an outside promotional company to promote the hell out of this thing. That do it for a living and give us ideas on how to, how to approach the community. Now, if we feel like we can do it inside, I'm good with that, I'm just throwing caution out there. That for us, at least for, to maximize the event, is, is, I think it'd be money well spent.
I think the problem is, we don't have the money to spend on it.
But I will say from a staff perspective.
That's a problem.
I do what I can, but I can't do it all. It's, it takes a lot, it's a, it's a big effort.
One of the things we've got to be able to figure out, Joe, and we're gonna have a meeting December the seventh with the HOA presidents. They are really key in this entire thing, in my opinion. They need, in my opinion, they need to understand how important they are in terms of Marvin Day and getting that out to their neighborhoods. Because what we do, we're having a meeting December the seventh, we had one about six weeks ago. And the experience we have is that we, Christina was there and downloading all the information, all the good things, that y'all are doing on behalf of the community. The outcome of that meeting was, they didn't communicate it, and I, I'm making a general term, there might have been some that did, to their, to their neighbors. So it stopped at that meeting and one of the intents that we have for this upcoming meeting is to say, hey, guys, we need you on Marvin Day. And to communicate this to everybody in our community. And I'm really hoping they hear us on that because I think there is instrumental in making it successful.
I, I would agree with that and I know it, it's frustrating because you, 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 you trust that you're handing it off to them and it's, it's, they have their communications team and. Sometimes it gets, and even with ours, it was a person who wasn't, the, the person who I sent, we sent the email to about just getting information out. Was, believe it or not, it's, it was on the South Carolina side, so was having some issues and didn't get that pushed out and. It, there's, there's a number of reasons, but I am still an advocate, I agree with that and I think that's a good thing, but I am a big advocate of not just getting the information. They hand out to the, the kids in the elementary school, middle school stuff, but also putting it on the announcement, start now. I mean, why not now, put on your calendar for May twenty-first, Marvin Day. There, there's no reason the high school principal can't read that off when he's sending that, and it is a blast that they send out. My wife gets it on her phone, I get it on mine, we get sometimes simultaneously, we're getting the same phone call and it's the same message. And with that is a, before you even get the message, verbal message, you get a link to click on this link to see what's going on and thing. And that should be on it going forward, the thing which, which, there's a few other issues I need to talk to him about, including, you know. Drop off with kids and stuff like that, that I, I ran into him the other day and he actually thought it was a good idea, so there's a number of issues we can talk about.
Principal you're talking about?
Yes, yes, so, um, I have a, I have a great idea of how to get a lot of cars off the road really quick and it's just a matter of. And he looked, he's like, wow, I, I never thought about that, but it's, it's, it's a way to address, just dropping kids off in the morning, something as simple as that is a. More than a half hour process, um, that you have to wait. But, but it's, it's in announcements with that, it's in announcements, I'm sure the middle schools are doing something very similar in the elementary schools. If you get the kids, to your point, and get the kids involved, then that, you know, the parents have to figure out a way, they're already putting it on their, their notice. But, uh, you know, I, I wish I had a better answer for the HOAs, but we can't necessarily.
Then why don't, then why don't we have a meeting with the HOA, get the HOA presidents and their, or their boards and have, have a meeting in, in our new town hall? That'd be a great way to introduce them to the new town hall and say, okay, you're just a, you're just a bigger part of this as anybody. Are you gonna, are you gonna step up or are you gonna step down?
If more importantly, they have a hundred percent of all of the contacts that we don't necessarily have.
Yeah, absolutely, but that, that's a good one. Invite all of the HOA boards to town hall, you push it down, you push it down to them and say, you've got to do this. And it can't be a one-time thing, it should be a two and three time a week thing up until Marvin Day. Go to, go to Spectrum and have Spectrum put it on their community calendar and start promoting Marvin Day on Spectrum. I don't know if we wanna do it that big of an outreach, but why not?
Why not? The car show, I mean, people from all over would love to come to the car show.
Right, so, the number of people that show up is gonna, gonna impact the success of it.
See, I would love us to promote it in Valentine Magazine, that goes out.
Well, you got the, you got the sports magazine.
Yeah, the Waxaw Sports.
The Waxaw Sports.
And seeing, that's the reason I, I keep going back to this.
But the Valentine, I know the guy that does the Valentine thing, so we can get it, put, push to that.
So, okay, so we need to add the Waxaw Sports one for advertisements starting like now, that's a monthly thing.
Is that the, the Waxaw Marvin Sports monthly? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the one, that's the one, I already have a relationship with that guy.
I know, that's what I'm saying, so let's.
Yeah. Uh, I haven't, I haven't sent him anything recently and he has a, he has a month ahead deadline.
You're right, so talk to him.
For them to do an interview show and talk about Marvin Day and the Valentine happening.
So.
It really would.
So, and, and this is, this has been burning in, on the back burner, but it hasn't been mentioned here at all, but. And, and it's, it's frustrating from a Gene Stowe standpoint that nobody really understands what, where Marvin came from and what Marvin, the history that Marvin has. I was at the premiere, um, and he's really trying to figure out, and that's, that's his deal and I understand that. But a big part of this community is the AME folks and to your point about not having kids, I don't see any, uh, and. Maybe I reach out to the, the minister there and, and say, hey, is there something, how we can incorporate your folks into this, this group? Because I think they're a huge part, that congregation is a huge part of Marvin and what Marvin is today. And it's, they talked about this bringing together way back a hundred years ago in this premiere. And it's like, this is an opportunity to bring that community in too, so I don't have any contacts over there. I went to a hundred year old birthday party years ago, um, but I just saw recently a recent, unfortunately, it was a funeral procession, it was from AME. And there was a, a long line of cars that someone obviously well-known had passed and. But I think, I, I don't know, does anyone have any contacts at AME?
I, I, well, what I was gonna say i- is, um, Gene Stowe actually just reached out to me recently and I was gonna bring it up at our regular meeting, not necessarily.
He reached out to me as well, too.
Okay, okay. And, and talking about doing not a premiere, but like a showing or something like that.
Yeah, yes, something to that effect where we, you know, and that wants something, yes, I know, I know, that, that's a problem. Well, his goal is to get it to the next level.
Correct.
Which is syndicated across the country because of what, what happened here a hundred years ago, which would fly in the face of what the media is out there. Necessarily preaching, but it's something that, and, and maybe I'll start with Gene, does he have a good contact there? Cuz he's the one that's done all the interviews and how we can incorporate them, so I, I'll do that.
Well, and Austin's got it on here to talk to Gene about having him.
I do.
You do, it is, under Austin.
I, I was not aware of that.
I'd like to reach out to Gene Stowe about being on hand.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that, but okay.
Yeah, I mean, he's at the point now, he, he looks at Marvin as the most influential community, there's gotta be people we know that would wanna be interested in financing this to get this to the next level. But, and they can't show the premiere for, I mean, you were specifically told you can't take pictures or video of anything when we were at the premiere. Cuz that could affect the launch of this.
Do we wanna do a showing at Village Hall?
You, you can't do a show.
Yeah, that's the thing.
You're not gonna be able to do a show, that's just it.
Unless you have, unless you have ten thousand dollars or something.
No, the blurb that we showed at, whatever blurb we showed.
The trailer.
The, um.
Town Hall event.
It's a town hall.
It's a town hall event.
Yeah, the trailer.
Running, have Gene at town hall, have him there with his books, let him talk to people.
We'll just have him at the meet and greet, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That's emerging.
I mean, yeah, give, give, give him an opportunity like we did at town hall meetings to, to speak and stuff, but, but with people there, it's, it's. Uh, somehow we gotta incorporate, I truly believe based on what I've learned and how much I've learned about how big a part this community is. And we're not including them in any way, what I see, but not to say good or bad, but I just would like to at least have something that maybe they could come up with.
I agree, absolutely.
Um, but it's adding more, but it's not, it's just bringing, inviting them in, that's what.
And it's bringing, so very important, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, okay, so. And Jamie, you and I probably need to sit down at some point and make a time.
Like soon, for like less than six months out.
You wanna do much tomorrow or Thursday?
Yeah.
I was gonna have that tomorrow, I'm gonna boost.
We're meeting next Tuesday, we can work some of, yeah, yeah.
So as soon as I'm done.
Some of the stuff that you're thinking over there.
A lot of details.
It's, um.
Tomorrow, Wednesday. Um, it would have to be afternoon just because I, I have a wide open.
Cause I've got the bridge.
Can you guys figure that out?
I know, I just, we're just, yeah, and I'm, I'm good, I'm good.
Cuz we still need to do this scheduled thing, this time, this schedule.
I have coffee with council here now, so. Austin and I just, I'm subbing for Andy on coffee with council on Thursday, so. So Thursday, the events that I could do tomorrow after one.
Let's do after one, cause I'm Thursday, I'm Thursday, okay.
All right, so Jamie and I'll take care of it.
Okay, what else do we have to do on this back page? Okay. Have we discussed all the Marvin Day stuff? Have we discussed all the Marvin Day stuff we need to discuss?
Yep.
Yeah, I think so.
There'll be a lot of fun too.
Oh, well.
I think generally speaking.
Up until the diatrics done.
Okay, next item on the agenda.
Next item is to discuss and consider amending the fee schedule to modify professional pass and facility.
Okay, I'm passing out the fee schedule, the revised fee schedule.
What is this?
I don't know.
Derek, if you don't mind, I'm gonna open this real quick. There's been some discussions at a staff level, this is, we're not asking for complete direction today. We just kinda wanna get your feedback, see if it's something y'all are interested in tackling immediately or if you wanna wait a couple of months. But long story short, we've got some professional pass holders that basically have classes inside of our barn. So they're renting out the, reserving the barn, I should say, to have classes. You have the classes, Tai Chi classes, that sort of thing. Essentially, what they're doing is paying $250 to get the professional pass. I think the initial intention, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, of a professional pass was to address photographers, that sort of thing. These professional pass holders will reserve the barn from, I don't know, Monday every 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock. I'm just using that for an example, for indefinite periods of time, no more than a year in advance, I think.
With or without a barn fee?
There's no payment.
Okay.
So what we're looking at is, is this an opportunity where you all want to consider some payment structures for rental fees? Are you okay with it, professional pass holders essentially reserving the barn for free with the 250 annual pass?
No.
Yeah, but this is, we kinda talked about this at our last meeting. And we were, we were sharing with Derek some, you know, different ideas of, you know, what we do with the professional pass fees and what that really entitles. And, you know, I think what we, you know, what we never intended, the professional pass fees, was never to reserve the barn. And, you know, then we got into the discussion of, well, is it just reserving the barn? Are professional pass fees also reserving a field for, you know?
The garden.
Different things.
So this got into a larger discussion with Derek and I about, do we wanna change the fee schedule to create that distinction? And also, do we want to change it where it's a minimum hourly rate? Because right now, we advertise for a four hour rental, however, we allow an hour rental if they want to do so. We just take the four hour and divide it by four. So it's really the conversation that we wanna have with you guys to, number one, make sure we're on the same page with the professional pass intention. Number two, to see if you want to talk about a minimum of a rental fee and just change it to a straight hour instead of the the four hour rate. Number three, Derek's got some ideas about allowing the professional passes to reserve the barn at a discounted rate during certain time periods that are non-peak. So it's a good structure that he's got.
That's what we talked about, peak and non-peak, yeah.
But I do wanna mention, right now, at this day and time, it's gonna cause a lot of staff hours because the way that you would essentially reserve it is no more than three or four months in advance. And so we're constantly gonna have people calling in to reserve.
I thought we were getting an online system.
Well, we are, but it's it's probably three or four months out.
Did we approve this, like?
Yeah. Yes.
It, I mean, but I'm implementing all the software and the app myself. And it's every two weeks, we have a meeting and they implement a new item. It's a lot, it's not a quick process.
So how are people renting or reserving the barn without paying money for it?
Well, they, so that's the professional pass structure as it is. It was originally first come, first served. And I foresaw a conflict coming with three people hosting an exercise class hypothetically, all showing up at 9:00 on a Monday morning. Logistically, that just can't happen, like, we can't handle that parking. And so I was steering them to a time that was open and loosely reserving it. It's always subject to them getting moved if a rental takes place.
In the professional pass that they get, does it say they get the barn?
No, no, it's just, it's just a discussion that we have.
So we're letting a professional pass person use the barn without paying for it?
Correct. As the barn would be, like you said earlier, open. I mean, you could go up there right now and have and have coffee with Kim and charge people $50 a head to have hot tea with you.
But then wouldn't I have to pay the village in order to reserve the barn for me to do that?
Only if you're reserving it specifically for you.
You're not reserving the barn. You're using the barn when it's available to have your business.
But are these people not reserving the barn for their exercise class?
They're not reserving the barn.
First come, first served.
I mean, they're not renting the barn. They are.
Utilizing it when it's available.
Utilizing it when it's available. And I am, and I'm scheduling it so that there's not a conflict.
Okay, if somebody's using the barn for money making purposes, they need to be paying us for it.
They are, paying us $250.
They need to get it for them.
Per each time, per each time, because they're, they're charging, say, let's, let's use a yoga.
No, no, I got it now, but they need to be paying us each time they reserve it. Or each time they use it for a class, they need to be paying us in addition to their $250.
So how do you distinguish that between that and a photographer who just wants to go out in the area?
Then they pay the $250 and they don't have to pay extra.
Right, right, but they, but if they wanna use the barn as.
Then they have to pay extra.
Okay, so so maybe we get to a point where if there's a fee for a professional fee, that's an annual fee that you just pay for it rather than each time. With that, if you are going to use the barn for any reason, that area, because that's the word, that has a separate cost to it. And if you're just gonna take pictures out in the field, have at it, do as much as you like.
That's your professional pass fee.
But if you're gonna have, and I've seen also Tai Chi out in the field there, is that field ever, it's used for a little? I saw a little kick around with little kids.
Well, that's where this came up, like, I was talking about revenue and generating revenue. And like the green space, we have soccer shots, like, these companies, they're making tons of money and they're using the facilities for $250 for a year.
Right.
So soccer shots has classes there and then Tai Chi on the green space. So I talked about, like, we need to rent this out to make money.
Yes.
And then like we have, I know one lady who does like different workout classes and she's there four days a week.
Okay.
So she's using us as opposed to getting her own building?
Correct.
Yes, yes. I mean. It's a, it's an easy, I mean.
And it's great for them, but if it's too expensive and they only have eight people come to class, they only pay $5 per class, then they're not gonna rent the barn.
But then we don't, then that's their business decision. It's a business decision on them, but what I'm hearing is they're using our barn as their.
Business.
Yeah, they are.
And we can't do, we gotta eliminate that part of it and make it where, damn, you know what? I probably need to start looking at getting a business.
So is everybody at the table of the consensus that the professional pass is not to be used for reserving the barn?
Yeah.
Correct.
Or space, the open space either.
But I, but I think what you can do is offer them, like she said before, discounted rates versus the full rental.
Okay, so I'll get, I'll come back to that, John, but I just wanna make sure everybody's in the same agreement here that that's not the intention.
Correct.
Okay, so the second step is gonna be to discuss the way that we can allow these people to either reserve the barn, i.e. an annual, I'm sorry, an hourly rate, just flat across the board, or a discounted rate with a schedule that Derek's got laid out or something that we've seen at other municipalities, which is not really something we wanna do, but I wanna mention it as a possibility. They can, we can charge these people a percentage of their revenues and it would be an honor system. 20%, for example.
Yeah, they're not gonna do that. We need money upfront.
Okay.
That's so complicated.
The two options that we've come to the conclusion of, Derek and I, are either a flat hourly rate with a minimum. And then the second option that Derek has, and I'm gonna let him explain it, is a schedule where that you can only rent during certain times, but it's a discounted rate, which I think is what y'all.
That's enough to be more complicated.
So let's also pick out the designated areas of open space that they, because if we say, okay, you can't use this spot right outside the barn, then they move it over to another area that they're having their class at, so.
There'll be in the parking lot. There's a running club in the parking lot.
Yeah, I've seen them.
Yeah.
So the areas could be any, any facility space exceeding a certain square footage.
I would say the, a field in particular, the barn and the pavilion are the three things that you would wanna.
I'd say any place in the park.
I'd say any place.
Me too. Any place in the park.
They are using that area as a location where they don't have to run the business out of their home. There's very little cost as far as setting up, I mean, you can set up a yoga place and all of a sudden get your group and before you know it, you may have 50 people showing up. You've got parking, you've got all that and you're not, you're not spending a dime from an investment standpoint. So maybe we separate the photographers, because a photographer can see.
Just get a photography pass.
A photography would be a separate fee that they can use any part of it. They're gonna take pictures as long as there's an event going on.
But, yeah, but they're not reserving it, right?
Correct.
I mean, if somebody's hanging out in the garden and they wanna use it, they're gonna have to make an hourly rate.
You know, I mean, we just gotta go to an hourly rate for anything and.
I agree.
If if there's a group that wants to continually be at that spot, then you offer a, say, an annual fee that gives them a discounted rate. Because if a one-off comes in and wants to rent the barn, they don't have, they're not paying the annual fee, but they're paying the full rate for the barn. But if it's a person who's gonna use it over and over again.
It's too much, too much for us to follow.
Well, once it gets into an automatic system that you just.
None of it's automatic.
Well, it will be.
It will be, is what he's getting at.
Let me explain what's in front of you and I apologize for all of the hain scribble. But it's, it's two different options, but they could potentially be used in conjunction with each other.
Do we have copies?
Yeah.
Can you pass this down? They're right there.
This, where you have like a calendar, is more or less keeping the system that is in place and then applying the $20 an hour rental fee to the professional pass people who want to reserve a space in the park. And I highlighted what I consider the non-peak hours for that to be able to happen. So we still have like Monday and Wednesday evening, if Bob wants to go have his anniversary party, he can, you know, just reserve the barn or if an HOA wants to have a meeting there. And then, so that's basically keeping the same system that's in place right now. But it would allow them to reserve it and then, and we get a reduced rate rental fee for that. All right, the other fee or the other schedule of fees is, is the formal one that you guys approved. And I'm proposing that we simplify the Monday through Thursday versus Friday to Sunday fees. And we still give incentive to the residents, but basically put the barn at a, logistically, $50 an hour for a resident, $200 for a four hour block and $350 for non-residents. And then this picnic shelter, $100 for a four hour block and $175 for, for non-residents. And so the comment that I put in, the DD2 comment to the side of that, or the DD1, is actually based on another price, so it wouldn't be $40, it'd be $50.
So we don't need to get into the detail as to the hours and the rates and stuff right now. We'll go back and work on that. The, the main consensus that I need to obtain is, are y'all interested in a flat hourly rate or do you want to do a discounted rate with a complicated schedule?
Flat hourly rate.
Yep, not complicated.
Although I did like the idea, if we're kinda getting rid of that professional pass, which is that, that we still have a photographer's pass available, because I think they're in a separate kind of thing, you know?
All right, so let me just ask the question and I apologize for making it, but there's a lady who runs a trail running club training group for middle school kids out there. She wants to know that they can meet at the picnic shelter twice a week and use that as the access to the trails.
She has to pay for it.
Does she, wait, does she charge?
Yeah, that's her, that's her side business.
She has to pay for it.
Okay, what is that fee then?
Whatever the hourly rate is.
For what?
The picnic shelter.
Yeah, but they're really running, they're just meeting there.
No, no, that's, actually, that's the right answer. That's, I wasn't thinking that. So that, so they would pay the, for the renting the picnic shelter.
If they, if they want it for the whole time period.
Well, even if they are meeting there and they spend 10 minutes there meeting and then they go run, that's the minimum. I mean, if she, if she is the, if she's the middle school running coach and this is where they're training, that's another, that's another, totally another situation. But if she's making money on this, they need to pay for it.
A middle school coach is making a stipend too, right? You're talking about versus a business?
I'm talking about versus a business.
Yeah.
But you would just charge her an hourly, one hour?
Yes.
Right. So $25 if she's a resident.
Okay, so y'all like the idea of a photography pass, a flat hourly rate, not doing a schedule with a discount? Everyone's on board with that?
Yeah, and this is literally the time to do this because we can post it starting in January. So if we're gonna do this, we gotta like get it done.
When is y'all's next meeting?
December 7th. December 7th.
Tuesday, so.
Okay, we'll try to get this amended, get it back to you guys for your recommendation to cancel and then cancel can.
To the council.
Yeah.
Because this goes year by year.
The only other question that I know Derek is burning to ask is, are you gonna give any discounts back to the professional pass holders that have purchased their passes this year, knowing now, fast forward, that they're not gonna have their classes in the barn?
Prorate it towards hourly rates.
Wait, say it again, Christine?
So.
I have people that have already purchased their 2022 passes.
I would say that would go towards, you know, that, that you could either give them a refund or that could go towards their hourly rate.
Yeah, if they, if they don't like the changes, then give them their money back and.
John, we're gonna go somewhere else.
We'll, we'll get some recommendations to y'all on that.
So the flat hourly is for all rentals?
Yes.
They're gonna, you guys are gonna work, they're gonna, you guys are gonna work on that.
But that makes sense, right, guys?
We're gonna give them back recommendations. And then to the council.
Yeah, it could get, it could get out of hand real quick with, I mean, especially if you don't have, as a business, you don't have to have an investment on a, a place where you're meeting and working.
What would be that flat hourly rate?
Well, you and I, we'll talk about it and then we'll, we'll propose it. The PRG board can either take it, leave it, amend it, and then cancel, adopt, whatever it is. So we'll, we'll come up with something. If y'all don't like it, then y'all change it.
Yeah.
One on one.
I got it.
Um, it's, I have to forward you an email to give it to you. Where, which email address can I send it to? Give me one second to do that.
Are we done with our agenda?
Yeah, if we're done with our piece, we'll adjourn.
Yeah, so a lot of you guys have. Yeah, Dan already left though.
All right. Do I hear a motion on the table to adjourn the Parks and, Parks and Greenways? Well, you're still under the joint meeting, but to adjourn the Parks Recreation and Greenway members here at the Village Hall at 11:12 on November 30th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have one drop. All right, guys, thank you.
Who seconded that?
Joe, have a good future.
I'm, he's seconded.
Thank you. I gotta fix those.
We have lots of time for lunch today.
I got, I'm good on that. I gotta meet you down later.
All right, let's go.
One day.
Jamie, Jamie, I sent Steve, I'll give you one second.
I'll get some of the work on your sketch.
Okay, you should have it now, just let me know if that doesn't work.
All right, moving on, next item in discussion, discussion of government, nonprofit communication requests.
Okay, I'm gonna keep this really brief. I've had two requests for communications. One, I already sent something out on just because they were, it was pretty urgent, it's with the county, but I just wanted to get you guys to approve it anyway. The first one is, uh, Union County broke ground on the new library. They just want some, wants to help out with marketing to bring some attention to the project.
I missed this grand opening.
Yeah, they, they said they missed you. I've been, I've been talking to them.
Yeah, I know. I don't know.
Did you RSVP to it?
No, I, I think I just overlooked it. They probably sent me an email and I'm not great on my emails.
Moving forward, I don't think we need to get approval from y'all on intergovernmental. Moving forward, I don't think we need to get approval from y'all on intergovernmental communications, are y'all okay with that?
I don't understand what you're asking me to do.
Are you okay with me sharing this information for them?
If it's a governmental entity, I think y'all are fine with it.
Yeah.
Okay?
It's all public.
I just wanna be sure, the other one, where did my papers go?
The other ones are Toys for Tots kind of equivalent in Union County, it's like sponsoring a family.
It's Union County, what is it? Hope Union County or Union County, Chris Spiero or something like that.
It's for, for people that wanna sponsor a family or a kid or something.
You guys haven't allowed other nonprofits recently, uh, other fundraisers, but I just wanted.
Like, I don't know that this is necessarily a fundraiser, is it?
Thanks. It's on the back page.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't, this isn't like, they're not really raising funds, this is more of a.
Are y'all okay with this?
Yeah.
Everybody good?
I mean, they're not asking for money, they're asking for like, it's like, why can't I think of what the word is?
Donations?
No. Resources?
Volunteers?
It's like a, you know, community service, like, it's like Toys for Tots, but they're not asking, it's not like, it's not like it's an entity coming in and saying, we need to raise money for ourselves, this is like doing something nice for other people.
What is that called?
What is it called?
I don't.
I'm fine, it's fine, okay, send it out.
Sorry, he just wanted to make sure that y'all were okay with it.
I just, I just don't want people coming in here asking, asking for us to give them money for like, a baseball field.
I've only got one other item after this, and then we're done, and this'll take less than five minutes.
Okay, then I'll say.
Where are you going?
I gotta, I gotta go to Monalee.
Run away.
Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor, can he continue on?
Yep.
Okay, uh, the last thing I have on the agenda is this iPad policy, I'm getting these devices in as we speak, and I just wanna get this policy done. Um, it's literally almost word for word, the cell phone policy just expanded for these devices. Um, just says, you're responsible for, um, you're to use them responsibly, if you leave the village, you have to turn, you have to return them, uh, they're primarily for business use, where you are responsible, responsible for any non-business related expenses, and that you're required to maintain public records, just pretty standard stuff.
So these are iPads that are issued to us, and it's just, you're gonna send information that I, we'll be using as like our own.
Agenda packet.
Village computer?
Yeah, 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 pretty much, you'll get your agenda packets through an app on there, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna, I'm still waiting the last few in, but once I get them in, I'm gonna schedule individual times with you all, you'll come in, I'll show you how to use them, I'll show you.
Emails too?
Uh, you can set up your, yes, you can set up your email on there too.
Okay.
But you'll get individual training with me, and.
So, you just want us to approve this, and then we'll sign it whenever we get our iPads?
Pretty much.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the iPad policy.
So moved.
Further discussion, all in favor? Aye. There we go. He took a quick second.
Is that it?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the joint village council PRG meeting for the village council at eleven seventeen a.m.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See, that's gonna take five minutes.
Awesome.